Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
You ordered the meeting?
From the Pledge of Allegiance, we have two middle school students. Abby Alley-Violet and Hannah Alley-Violet are here to lead us in the pledge. Come on up.
Come on down, you're the next contestant, and the price is right.
Yeah, you come right up here, it's okay.
We don't bite, you know.
Yeah, not much.
Well, not some of us.
As long as that be great.
Minutes from twelve nineteen. Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, before I start that. Corey, where are you?
I am in Austin, Texas, in a conference room by myself.
You're at work?
Are you in Austin?
I am at my corporate headquarters, yes, I am at my, I am at work, yes.
Oh, thanks.
My corporate headquarters, office.
Larry Heath is not here. He talked to me the other day. Okay, now, we do have a motion on the minutes, I'm sorry about that. And we had a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Phyllis? Okay, the manifest is working its way around. I don't believe we have any votes. And we do have that nomination I signed the other day for woodworking.
For automotive and woodworking, yes, we have a nomination of Carl Foti. Have him in the automotive department.
I have a motion.
That we elect Mr. Carl Foti for the automotive department.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Well, it's been only a few school days since vacation, so we haven't had a lot going on, but it certainly hasn't been boring. We had a great afternoon on Monday where the school board ratified the teachers' contract. And the Friday before vacation, the Teachers Association ratified that agreement, so we have a deal.
And we did it unanimously?
Yes, that was, thank you very much, thank you. For the record, it was done unanimously, the board voted to ratify the agreement. And there'll be some more information about that agreement when we talk about the warrant articles later on in this meeting. Yeah, I had a safety advisory committee meeting yesterday, or Monday, and it was great. We were really moving forward, we had rolled out our online Alice training, which is training for, more training for staff. And we are preparing for our first non-student drills coming up in the next few weeks. Once the non-student drills occur, we'll have a student drill. And we have a video that Mr. Dawson created for parents, and an informational letter that will be going home. So there'll be a lot more coming up. I just wanted to note that the work of the safety committee has been absolutely fantastic. The team is working really well. And we're making a lot of progress. And you may not see it publicly, because it's all very confidential and private, but it is moving along very well. I am, I have met twice with the subcommittee that is looking at the move of the middle school, the potential move of the middle school. And we are moving forward, it's, there's not much to report at this time, except that we just keep compiling information and questions, and trying to find the answers to those questions and information in preparation for a presentation to the board. We are hoping to present to the board sometime in the next month, the findings of that work. So we're moving along. And when I say a month, I mean a calendar month, not the end of January. So, you know, we'll see about a final date for our presentation. Our thought is that we would want to have a presentation of the findings of the study at one meeting, and then at the second meeting, have an open opportunity for public comment, similar to what we had in September, possibly facilitated by an outside person. And then, at the third meeting, a decision by the board as to what were the next steps. So that's kind of the process that I'm thinking, is a three-step process. One meeting to present, one meeting to discuss, and one meeting to deliberate and decide.
Can I make one suggestion, please?
Anytime.
There's a lot of concern about whether it's going to be six, seven, eight, or seven, eight. And I'm hoping that the discussion would clarify the pluses and minuses of each proposal.
Thank you, it does not at this time, because the board directed me as the superintendent to review seventh and eighth moving to the high school and sixth grade to the elementary school.
So that decision is cast in concrete?
Uh, no, no, that's just what I was asked to research.
Okay.
So we'll present that, and then we can talk about whether or not you'd like me to look at sixth grade moving to the high school building.
I will be asking that.
Yeah, thanks, we are certainly aware that that concern is out there, but we're moving forward based on the decision that the board, what the board asked me to study. I'm certainly happy to look at it.
I wasn't part of that discussion, but I would like some more information.
Sure, sure, yeah, be happy to do that, no problem. That concludes my update, thank you.
Any reports, policy?
Policy met tonight, and we reviewed about fifteen policy J, policies, and we'll have those for the next meeting. We have another meeting on Monday at four thirty, and another one in February, on February sixth. And the fourteenth, next Monday.
Yeah, this Monday at four thirty, and then February sixth. What do we got, kid?
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met on December nineteenth. In attendance were myself, Dr. Brown, Mr. Heath, Superintendent Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Mr. Dawson, and Ms. Levitt. Pace and New Hampshire statewide assessment performance data from last year were presented by Dr. Haynes. Scores are generally flat year over year, which suggests that instructional practices are not leading to change. The administration has been implementing changes with the introduction of a workshop model, which has been well-received. The initial focus will be on writing this year, with the addition of reading next year. The goal is for eighty percent of students to be reading at grade level, with the understanding that this won't be achieved instantaneously, but rather as part of a process. It was emphasized that teacher feedback indicates that additional intervention resources are needed, in the effort to help some student groups to progress. Mr. Dawson reported on the AP program, which has more course offerings than enrollments can support, generally. Administration is considering alternating some course offerings each year, such as AP Government with US, AP US History. AP Calculus has sufficient interest to offer annually, however, AP Language and Composition may be removed, although it will still be available from V-Lax for interested students. AP Spanish may also be removed and replaced with a fifth-level Spanish course, as few students are taking the AP Spanish exam. The new course would have more relevant content, such as medical language. Ms. Levitt presented information about the NECO, which is Northern Essex Community College, early college program. Students select from five pathways, STEM, Criminal Justice, Education, Business, or Healthcare, and follow a defined course of study during their junior and senior years, comprised of general education and career-specific courses. The benefits include access to college-level support services, library, for example, cost savings, transfer agreements with some four-year colleges, a number of four-year colleges, and the ability to experience college and develop a level of maturity, still with the safety net and supports that are available to high school students. There are some challenges, such as providing the opportunity to families who can't easily afford the cost, some transportation logistics and academic calendar differences. Depending on the level of interest, administration may consider piloting this on a small scale next year. Dr. Haynes presented a proposed format for data collection for inclusion in the annual report. This will be reviewed during our next meeting, which is on January twenty-third, at four thirty.
Next meeting by chance?
January twenty-third, four thirty.
For information, those are always here, usually up in superintendent's, SAU office.
Yes.
Hey, Facilities?
Facilities has not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February sixth, at three forty-five PM.
What time's two?
What's that?
Two forty-five?
Three.
No, we've met tonight, it's finance, financially.
Oh, I'm sorry, Facilities, sorry. Facilities met tonight, and Jim Baker... Yep. Pam, Brown, and Corey were there, present, along with Michelle Cotro and Kristen, the assistant. Corey was there by telephone. And we reviewed a number of items, specifically funds, reserve funds, contingency funds, and the balances in them, and what they can be used for, how they can be funded. We also reviewed some systems that are being considered. One is an upgrade of the fire alarm system at Baky School. And also, something called a blue light system, which is a warning system, that instead of an audible tone, is also has a light that flashes. Because in some areas of the schools, apparently, the sounds can't be heard, for example, in the band room, or various places where the noise level is too high to hear the alarms. So that was all reviewed by a safety committee, and we looked at their recommendations today. We looked at possible ways to fund them, and had some questions about the middle school requirement. And that's going to be, information's going to be looked into. We also had looked at some urgent repairs. But we're going to need to make a motion on that tonight. The Facilities Committee has approved three urgent repairs, but the funding we request is going to be through the Capital Reserve Fund, and we need the whole board to weigh in on that. So the first one is skylights at the middle room. They have the old-style skylights, the fixed skylights with the plastic domes.
What is a satellite?
Skylight.
Skylight, sorry.
Which school?
I thought he said satellite, I was thinking it was some special dome, you know, okay.
Is this building?
What's that?
What school is that?
At the middle school. And even though the future of the middle school is still being decided, this is something that is leaking now. The plastic domes are actually cracked, they're currently covered by canvas or plastic. The total cost to replace them is forty-four hundred and forty-one dollars. So we moved and approved that expenditure. Another one is at the Memorial School. For the heat pump at the storage garage has failed. And according to Steve, the facilities manager, that's not repairable. So we approved twenty-nine hundred dollars for that to be replaced. And also, the last thing is the walk-in cooler at Memorial School has also failed. And it's the compressor. So, that is something that's already underway. And we've also, so we've approved that for sixty-six hundred and fifty dollars, also to come from the Capital Reserve Fund.
I just wanted to add that we had talked about these cost items as needing to be, the items needing to be repaired, but in the committee, we had discussed requesting that the board entertain putting them on the agenda for the next meeting, so that they could be noticed to the public, you know, that there would be a request that we fund them in some manner other than straight from the operating budget, perhaps with the Capital Reserve for these items because of the number of out-of-budget expenditures. So although the committee reviewed the cost items, I think the recommendation was to ask the board to put them on the next agenda for consideration in terms of the funding of those items.
You're going to wait another two weeks before...
There we go.
Well, some of the, so the cooler had to be repaired. That is a food service item, so we didn't have a choice. What we're requesting is a mechanism for funding it, other than letting it just be covered by the operating budget. The skylights are a similar item, that we are kind of band-aiding those in the interim. We do not have a work order for them to be repaired at the moment, but they are sort of in critical condition. And then the heat pump is, pump is the same thing, so we really should replace those two items, repair those items, and we're hopeful that we could talk about how they might be funded in the next, at the next meeting.
Where is the heat pump again, in the garage?
In the garage at the...
Well, the main thing is the heat pump, because they don't have a heat pump, it's heater.
But they use that garage for storing inventories.
No, I have no problem, what I'm saying, it doesn't have to be heated, we have a little time with that. Because the heat pump is usually the heater.
It does need to be heated.
Yeah, it's winter.
It's, no, I know, but what do you, okay, so you're storing something that can't be damaged?
Right.
Okay. Is there a rule where we have to wait another week?
I don't know that we do, it's just that it's, it hasn't, it wasn't on the agenda for consideration by the board this evening, that was my only thought. But it is at the board's discretion in terms of their, it requires a board vote to expend from that Capital Reserve, so.
Well, we've got one that's already been repaired. We've got one that actually, we don't, I don't know what the weather's going to be in the next two weeks, right?
But good.
Okay, I almost want to say you could put this under emergency, personally.
Right, I mean, given the nature of the repair...
I mean, a skylight...
Is leaking.
Is leaking, I mean, how much damage do you want to increase, you know?
It is covered.
Yeah, but...
A windstorm or whatever could take the cover off.
You're talking about, what, twelve thousand here, sixty-six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven? Twelve, thirteen, about fourteen thousand?
Thirteen nine ninety-one, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thirteen nine ninety-one.
Yeah, well, yeah, I figured.
The fund, the fund that we're looking at currently has a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars in it.
I mean, the way I look at it, if somebody comes in and complains it wasn't on the agenda, I'll take the heat. I think, and I'm the guy that sets the, well, we set the agenda, right? I think these are emergency enough that we better move on them.
I would agree with you, and I think it'll be part of the minutes as well. Want to make a motion, Mr. Facilities Chair?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the skylights at the middle school be repaired for four thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. That the heat pump at Memorial School Garage, Storage Garage, be repaired for twenty-nine hundred dollars. These are up to these amounts. And the Capital Reserve, or the walk-in cooler at Memorial, be repaired for sixty-six fifty dollars, and that all of these monies come out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion that I'm going to, very quickly, we've already done the sixty-six fifty.
Right, but it was where it comes from that was the key.
Right, no, I understand that, what I'm saying, if anybody says, well, it wasn't on the agenda, so really, you're talking seventy-three hundred dollars.
Thirty-five million dollar budget, that's okay.
And a hundred and fifty-two thousand, you know, okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We also talked about water testing. There's new required water testing rules for lead in drinking water. So, Steve Riley put together a list of the different sources of water in the different schools that need to be tested. And the cost for that is going to be about twenty-six hundred dollars. So we also made a motion and approved the twenty-six hundred dollars for that water testing. It has to be completed, and the reports have to be done by July first of this year. And there's, there's nothing, you have to do it, it's mandated by the state.
I was just going to say, that's because it comes across my desk at work, that is a new change.
It is the state, right?
All public bubblers, water sources, now have to be tested.
You know, if it's state or federal, not that it matters, but...
It's state.
I appreciate that.
It's state. It's state.
Where does it fall?
Just want to...
I do, but now that you say that, I'm one hundred percent sure. I think it's in our...
Corey has a question. Corey, question?
Well, just a friendly reminder, we actually voted up no more than three thousand dollars to the testing of the existing systems, which Steve has already been doing testing over the years. So, the best part is, this three thousand dollar report will tell us if we have to do any remediation. But again, by, on Steve's, been actually mitigating the challenges over the years, and with the advancements of the bubbler systems that we already have in place, it's been taking care of that challenges as well. So the point being, Jim, I just want to make sure, we voted up to three thousand, so if someone reads Facilities Minutes, and then reads what we just said, I just want to make sure that they're the same.
Thank you.
It is a state requirement.
It's nice being right, it's so rare.
We don't need a motion.
Put that on the agenda for next time?
You don't need to do that, Peter.
It's gone, I think it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, it's state mandated, it's, any place there's a dispensing of water, everyone has to have, it's a public water system.
Someone asks you, you say, yes, we're doing the testing.
But this is a change, where it's dispensed. Okay.
That's it, on the...
How we doing on finance?
Oh, wait, can I make one, Facilities comment? I did mean to mention this under the safety committee, I think it's important to note that Mr. Tumel left us a parting gift.
Oh, the grant.
Mr. Tumel, and I do want to give some credit to Chief Briggs, because Chief Briggs found out about the grant opportunity, called me right away while I was at a conference on a Friday, I called Michael, and Michael got the application done that day. We got forty-eight thousand dollars for those blue lights, to do Baky and the high school. So, we are getting those for free, well, not for free, twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
We have to pay twenty percent.
You get a love.
About ninety-three hundred and...
Dude, it was dawn, and again, it goes back to, you know, Mr. Tumel wrote, he probably wrote enough money in grants in the last year to pay for his entire salary plus. It was incredible.
Those grants are specifically for Baky and the high school?
Yes, sir, Baky and the high school. Yeah, it won't cover Memorial, and the safety committee did discuss putting a stay on the middle school until its, until its fate is decided.
Right, and the purpose that, the reason why the other two schools were not awarded it is because Homeland Security already awarded them a grant that Mr. Tumel had helped Michelle, I believe, with, with the radios as well.
Yeah.
That is correct, Corey.
Just for clarification purposes.
Yes, that grant was also in the vicinity of similar money.
Significant.
Significant, those walkie-talkies are making a big difference. So we've been working through the process of using those, and I'll give you an update on that at the next meeting, but we're in the testing phase at this point.
Finance hasn't met since our last board meeting, the next meeting is January sixteenth at four thirty.
Relations?
Public relations, next meeting is on January thirtieth. I do have a question, and I don't know, just...
That's January thirtieth?
Did I say, yeah, that's what I meant.
I thought it was, we said October.
I meant to say January thirtieth.
You did.
Okay, I do have a question. At our, at our last public relations meeting, we talked about having a public forum at our next board meeting, I just want to make sure that that is being discussed or that we, that we decide that we're going to do that.
Public forum on the, I don't recall it.
To discuss the budget, I think you weren't at that, you weren't at that PR committee meeting.
Public forum to discuss the budget?
We were...
Can you remind me, Tammy, I'm sorry, I just can't.
You remember, right? I know it was a little while ago that we met.
We have a hearing tomorrow, a public hearing.
We talked about...
Tonight, we'll be here, public hearing tomorrow night, and then there's a deliberative...
We look back at the minutes here.
No, 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 you're okay.
What we talked about was...
I recall I brought it up.
Okay, good, Corey.
We were talking, we were, we were engaging about, I think in the last board meeting, we did speak about this, at the last board meeting. The conversation was, should we hold a public forum, a roundtable discussion, fireside chat about the budget before, so we can learn more if there's going to be any changes? But due to the fact that the timing is the timing, and the schedule is the schedule, and quite frankly, the public hearing's tomorrow night, it's not going to happen. If, and the lesson learned here is, maybe that should have been discussed in like August, before the budget started. The intent was there, the conversation was there, should we host a fireside chat about the budget to learn more, but, you know, we have a fair amount of public information already presented, so.
But that's not to say that we still couldn't do that, even in February, and give people the...
Absolutely.
...opportunity to come and ask questions about the budget, they will have... They would have been to deliberative session, they would have been to the hearing. And the more we discuss and explain, and help our communities understand why we spend the money we spend, then that's, the more informed, the voter, the better, the educated vote will be in March. Good press point.
True statement. We could, we could, we could block a period of time at a meeting.
It's subsequent, I think after the deliberative session, but...
But before the election.
But before the election, that's correct.
Right.
May I propose a date for that? It would make sense if the deliberative is the first week in February, I believe we have a board meeting the second week in February. So, we could do it on the thirteenth.
Now, that would be a separate meeting, or during a meeting?
We could do, we could, well, what I would propose, I'm not making, it's up to you as a board, but I'm simply suggesting that from six to seven, we have this fireside chat conversation, where we have, maybe folks come and attend, and can sit in small groups, and each of us can sit with small groups of folks, and talk to them about the budget, if we have enough folks, and just have an open dialogue, and then have the board meeting at seven.
And if there aren't enough...
If there aren't enough folks, we can just run it.
And explain why we did it, and it'll be on the video.
Yeah.
Corey, does that sound good to you, too?
It sounds great to me, and would be stellar, as if possibly the teachers' unions and all those negotiation teams all showed up united in this discussion with us as well.
I'd be happy to invite them.
Or representatives thereof. Yeah, that'd be nice.
That is a true statement, yeah.
So, when are you talking to?
Six to seven on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Personnel?
Personnel has not met, nor has Personnel set a date yet, to me.
Okay, any idea in the next meeting?
Uh...
No.
We don't have anything coming up.
I always put these down on my...
There is one scheduled for the end of the month, twenty-seventh, I think.
Thirty.
It's on the...
The thirtieth, but...
It's in the calendar, in case we want to hold one.
Yep.
Hey, Corey, anything on the SST?
Yep, two updates on the SST. The Seaco School Technology has not met since our last board meeting, but we do have an upcoming meeting scheduled for January, notes here, for January twenty-eighth at four thirty, Monday, held at Forty Linden Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. So that's the next governing board meeting. But then we have another governing board meeting, already scheduled for February Tuesday, February twelfth, and this will be a big day for the SST, as the finalists for the principals will be brought forth to the governing board. That's the only update I have at the time.
Seminary?
Nothing to report at this time, except I did meet with the two gentlemen who are interested in talking about potential redevelopment of the seminary.
People that were here a couple of weeks ago?
There are people that were here, we went and toured the seminary today, we looked at the science building, I spent almost two hours with them. And so they are going to go back, they asked me to send them plans and information that had been done in the past, because they were curious about elevators and what could happen. And, you know, I called Pete today and asked him about the zoning, you know, the historic building zoning. And there's not a lot to say yet, except that we had an initial meeting, and they're, they're going to get back to me to let me know what their thoughts are after that. We did have a long tour, and they really, they poked, prodded, and asked a lot of questions, so it was great, and I just want to publicly thank Mr. Riley for kind of changing his schedule up to meet with them quickly, because I thought they just wanted to talk in my office, but when they got there, I pitched, "Let's go look at the property," and they went for it, and so, glad they did.
Larry is in here, but budget hearing tomorrow night, seven?
Seventh block, yes.
Auditorium or in here?
Auditorium, yes.
Yep, okay, all right. And Larry is our, our school board representative. He will be presenting the default and the warrant articles, because now, under the change, the governing body does it. And where he's the representative, I asked him if he wanted to do it, and wants to step on anybody's toes, and he's the state, he's the rep, so he said absolutely. So he'll be presenting that. Superintendent, we're going to have a little bit of one tonight, and we can tweak a few things if we need to, but Larry will be given everything by the superintendent and Michelle, and so he should be ready.
We have a PowerPoint tonight to review, you need to vote on articles.
And he'll, and he'll go over that with him before he presents tomorrow night. So hopefully, we're all set on that. Adam, how you doing?
Thank you, how are you?
All right. Schools back in.
Oh, yeah.
And you're a happy camper.
Always.
Yeah. What do we got?
I have, uh, nothing new from the classes other than that they're all working on their Winter Carnival stuff, other than the seniors. Uh, seniors are working on setting up the winter semi, like getting decorations and sap, chevrons. Uh, the winter semi is going to be at the Austin 17 House on Friday, January, uh, 25th. Um, this is going way back from before vacation, all the way to last year. Uh, tacky sweater day, uh, went very well. A lot of student councils had their sweaters on. Um, and we could see a lot of participation from not only the students but the staff too. So that was really cool to see. Um, the Winter Carnival, winter meeting is happening this Friday. It's the third, yeah, I think the third Southern Student Council meeting. Uh, the theme's going to be the amazing race. And then Winter Carnival is starting to get into false swing now that we're back from break. Um, all the classes are working on their stuff and everybody's real excited to, real excited for Winter Carnival week.
That's all. Thank you very much.
No problem.
All business. I believe we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Dr. Brown.
So, the first one is BBA, School Board Powers and Duties, second read. We need further discussion on the wording of the number of meetings during the year. So we currently have approved that it will state, we'll have at least two, two meetings, full meetings, at least, um, excuse me, twice a month, except for July and August. And Mr. Heath would prefer to have the minimum listed, which is at least once in two months as the change.
I think it's, to bow to, to Mr. Heath's preference, I think it's fine to have the minimum in there. Um, a minimum of at least once in two months.
That's, that's the, that's the rule. That's the regulation from the state, I believe.
Yep. However, I think we can add to that and, um, I'd like to propose that we have an addition to that, which would be whenever possible, the school board will endeavor to hold two meetings a month, except in July and August.
Right.
I've got a bunch of reasons, but if I don't need to get into them, I won't.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, we've always had two, but this gives us the, I'm going to call it escape, that if there's a snow night and it's the last week of the month, we're not jammed up.
Yeah.
You know?
So I've got a proposal for wording for that.
Well, wouldn't that what you.
Make a motion, Jim.
Yeah, make a motion. Yeah, it's, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
But includes Larry's part as well.
So I'm going to take away the stricken line here and leave it as at least once in two months, period, and then add whenever possible, the school board will endeavor to hold two meetings a month, except July and August.
Right, but I put except, I put because the one, at least one in two months also needs to be modified by except July and August. So I put except for the months of July and August, the school board will plan to hold meetings for the transaction of business at least once in two months. And whenever possible, the board will endeavor to hold meetings twice a month and then the rest of the phrase.
So you've just modified the arrangement, yeah?
Yeah.
I like the way you have it.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Further discussion?
There's another, uh, well, would.
This one here?
On, on just this part.
A BBA?
No, I, I, I don't want to have two in the one.
Yeah, that's the one, BBA.
BBA.
Is there another change in BBA?
Is there another change in BBA?
Uh, yeah, there is.
Okay, so why don't we hold off on that and let's get this one behind us. Unless they're related.
No, I, um, I take it back.
I think two, one, that's fine.
Okay.
So, thank you for that.
We have Jim's motion.
Second.
Your second, Ellie's second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous?
Aye.
I, I see your hand even though they can't hear you say aye. Sorry Cory.
We can't see his hand, so.
So BEDB, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. We need to discuss further the timeline for distributing the agenda. I, um, we currently have, the agenda and materials should be distributed to the board members at least five days prior to the board meeting instead of seven. And we've also added that if anyone has requests for additional information that may be deemed necessary to assist them in their decision-making responsibilities, they should submit those at least two days prior to the board meeting.
So you get the agenda. I just want to make sure I've got my brain wrapped around this.
So if you have, we have the agenda by Friday.
Right.
And then Monday, if we have any questions.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
So that is basically allowing you time to gather information.
All, all we're asking for is a modicum of reasonableness. Our current process is that I meet with Pete or on Wednesday or Thursday to go over the agenda and prepare it. Phyllis sends you out the agenda on Friday, which is five days before the meeting with backup information. And then we're just asking that if you need us to get you anything, that you'd let us know by the end of the day on Monday so that we have time to get it together for you. I mean, we can almost always accommodate that and everyone's been very reasonable if we can't, you know?
So I move that we adopt it as proposed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And we have BGB Policy Adoption, second read. We're discussing part five, which was to be stricken and then Mr. Baker said he'd like to retain that section. Policies may be amended by the affirmative vote of a majority of the entire board at any meeting. The issue is whether we can amend a policy without prior written notice to the public. I think that is what the issue is because I did check the School Board Association, uh, policy manual and there's no RSA requiring written notice, but I think since policies are the constraint on board and district activities, I think it's only reasonable that we give written notice for any policy changes that we're proposing. Um, and we can amend them, but they need written notice. So I added in language to say policies for which written notice has been given. Now, there is an emergency that we can use.
Right.
To change policies that don't require written notice, but it requires a unanimous vote by the board.
May I, may I, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking so, go ahead.
Uh, just being, uh, you know, during my entry plan process, meeting with everyone for a long amount of time, transparency was really important and Pam's suggestion strikes at the heart of transparency, which is that we, we give public notice whenever possible to make a change to a policy, in part because we want to make sure that the people who are affected by the policy have an opportunity to comment. I think the fact that there's an emergency procedure gives us the opportunity, should we, you know, we'd have to straight face that. Uh, we don't, the term emergency for me is real. It needs to really be an emergency. And the way I justify that is could I explain it to you all as a board as an emergency and feel credible and confident? Or if I were on the front page of the union leader, would the most average person feel like it was a reasonable need to have an emergency policy change or an emergency meeting? That's the rule of thumb that I use. So I, I, I'm just saying I feel comfortable with this language.
I'd just like to point out that it's in conflict with policy BEDB.
Hmm.
It says items to be placed on the agenda should be received by the superintendent at least seven days prior to the meeting. Every board member has the right to place items on the agenda. Matters not included on, in the agenda may be presented during the meeting, provided the board agrees to discuss the matter.
Right.
So, kind of need to sync those up because it says matters not included in the agenda may be presented during the meeting, provided the board agrees to discuss the matter. In this case, we can only discuss a policy change if it's noticed previously.
I have an idea.
I, well, I liked you wherever possible. Here's my concern. When you make a policy, you set it in concrete and you have very little wiggle room. And if somewhere down the road, something happens that we're not able to, I know it says in emergency, we can, but I think that wherever possible gives us a little out that if something comes up, five years from now, school board members may not even be aware of this. You know, I mean, you, you know how big that policy is. I'm just looking for, I hate, God forbid, I, but I speak plain, plain language. We have an out if somebody says you didn't publish it, you didn't put it out. Well, we didn't because, you don't have to agree with us. I, I am always worried about restricting ourselves so much that, that we, we box ourselves in, you know? So whatever you, I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I see your point. I see every, I see it both ways.
Superintendent, your recommendation is?
Uh, I, I, I think that I'm, I'm okay with the fact that there are always minor distortions in policies. And the reality is if you look right underneath number five, it says the emergency procedure is on matters of unusual urgency and/or at the discretion of the board, the board may waive the two reading requirements and take immediate action to adopt new policies or revise existing policies.
So it's already there.
That's in sync with the policy BEDB.
What does it say before that?
It says before that Pam's proposal is policies for which written notice has been given may be amended by the affirmative vote. So what it's saying, I think what I was going for, Jim, is.
Two paragraphs even contradict.
Exactly. Let, let me, let me, let me, let me wrap this up because I'm kind of going in your direction around, you know how you were kind of wondering about the frequency of the board meetings? I think we need to just find some language that says, I'm not saying this is what I'm proposing for language because I need to think about it for a second, but in general or usually, policies for which, policies for which written notice has been given may be amended. And, uh, and then the emergency procedures is for the times when it's not usual. There, there may be a moment where we need to amend a policy very quickly and there's an emergency procedure here, but.
I think Pete's point is though, is broader than that because it talks about if something comes up or if something's overlooked. It's not necessarily an emergency, but it need, really needs to be dealt with to be efficient. Why lock ourselves in to a restriction? For, for what?
So are you, are you proposing that we take out the for which written notice has been given?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or put in wherever possible, written notice will be.
That's, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. Wherever, whenever possible.
Whenever possible, written notice will be given.
Yep.
Let's do that. Let's add that.
Need a motion on that thing?
So you want to change five to read policies may be amended by the affirmative vote of majority, provided at written notice.
That whenever possible, written notice is.
Okay.
It's been given or will be given.
Is given or will be given.
Whenever possible, policies for which written notice has been given may be. Possible karma.
That karma, believe it or not, is important.
Very important.
Now you need a motion on B, the BGB as amended, so move.
Well, I'm still.
Okay.
I'm still deliberate. I'm still thinking about whether I want to vote yes on this.
Well, we can have this, we can have a second. We got a motion. Give us a second and then we'll have your discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
How about it? Okay, Pam's want to second it. And what, what you want to say, Pam?
I think that changes in policy should be given written notice.
And they will be.
Period. Not whenever possible, but period. Um, and if it's truly an emergency, we have BGF coming up, suspension of policies. If we have a policy that truly has issues and we have a unanimous opinion on that, then without written notification, I think, then it would be a true emergency.
I say let's take the vote. I, I don't, I don't see.
So we're voting on your amended language?
Moving the vote.
Any other discussion?
Just that if you do it restricted like that, you're in conflict with BEDB where it says the, the board can agree to discuss any matter.
All right, let's move it. Uh, all in favor of the amended change?
Aye.
Pam, no, is that, is that yet? You, you can always abstain if you're not sure.
No, I'm voting no.
Okay, fine, all right. So you got Ellie, Jim, Tammy, myself and Cory in the affirmative? Pam.
So next we have, uh, BGF, suspension of policies. It's a brand new policy and it simply states that, again, this is second read, but it's just very short. It states that policies of the board are subject to suspension only upon a majority vote of the entire board membership at a meeting for which the proposed suspension has been described in writing or upon a unanimous vote of the entire board membership when no such written notice has been given. Policies pertaining to the internal operations of the board are subject to suspension only upon a two-thirds vote of all members of the board at a meeting for which the proposed suspension has been described in writing or upon unanimous vote of the entire board when no such written notice has been given.
So I'll give you an example of a circumstance where you may want to do this. Field, field trip for kids to go to Italy. There's a timeline in the policy. Somebody grants them a tremendous amount of money and they come to you and say, we're asking that you help us. You could suspend the policy and let them go. I, I, I really can't think of any time in 20 years that I've heard policies just get suspended because the transparency issues that it creates in the public with politics is very, very uncomfortable.
So there was no, there was no controversy as far as I can see from.
Is that your motion? That's your motion?
The motion is to approve second read. There were no comments that we had to discuss that I know of, so.
Second, all right. I'm going to make a comment and that is I'm going to say of the membership present. Because where it says now, you're saying the board. And if someone's not here, then by rule, you can't do it because the whole board wasn't there. So I'm going to say in both those cases where you talk to unanimous and the other one, you say by majority of members there. For instance, tonight, we couldn't do that tonight if I was not here.
You know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to be clear that I think that the reason why it says the entire board membership is to circumvent that happening when someone's not present because the, the policy may affect. I, I think that it's written the way it is so firm, it, it, so that policy, it's a big deal to, to, to circumvent policy.
Right.
And so if all the members aren't present, they're, that would be really concerning.
It's probably thinking in terms of national security. God forbid something happened and we are under attack or evacuated because of Seacroft exploding. You're not going to worry about BGDEF.
Right, right.
No, I understand. It's just that.
But you may not have a full board here.
If I, if I'm against.
That's a good point. That's a good point. I'm fine with it. I just want to be voting with you.
If a policy is being written tonight and I don't like it, I'll look on the meeting.
Right, right. Then you could like almost do like a filibuster or something.
I mean, if you don't think that can happen, take a look at Timbaland.
I think that needs to be in there, that modification.
All right, I'm fine with that. I just wanted everyone to think about it.
So are you asking to strike entire? Majority and just have a majority.
Membership present.
Membership present.
It's a membership present, okay?
And I think there's two places where it says also the unanimous one of the membership present at the end.
That includes anyone that's on remote too.
So a unanimous vote.
Of course. He's present. He's present under.
Present, absolutely. I totally agree.
So right here, um, this first paragraph, it says upon unanimous vote and again, of the membership present.
Right. Okay, um, move this, move it?
Yeah, yeah, there's one more, hold on.
Move it.
Under the same policy?
Yeah, at the very end, it says again, policies pertaining to internal operations of the board are subject to suspension only upon two-thirds vote of all the members for which, oh, hold on. Upon, or upon a unanimous vote of the entire board membership, so.
That's going to be membership present too.
In sync.
Okay, move the motion. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the record, there was an error on the agenda. It said 6.1.3 BGB was titled as Sexual Harassment and Sexual Violence Report Form, and the correct title is Suspension of Policies.
Actually, Policy Adoption.
I'm sorry, Policy Adoption, GBG. BGB. I'm going to start having one of those acronyms.
Okay, let's move it right along.
We've got a couple more here. And school superintendent, our current policy lists the duties of the superintendent. The School Board Association recommends that we list just a description of duties and reference the RSA that describes the duties in detail. I prefer the shorter version, the School Board Association's version, because regulations can change, but it's really up to you. It's a matter of taste. So we need to discuss.
Move to approve the shorter version?
I'd second that.
Rather than the shorter version, the, uh, yeah, association...
NHSBA.
The NHSBA sample.
And I'll second that.
Policy CB.
Yeah, I'll second that, Pam.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second read CCB, line of staff relations. The only change is to note public officials such as clerk treasurer and auditor are not considered employees and they report to the school board. So it's a minor change.
The board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Last one.
And last one CF, school building administration. Again, the New Hampshire School Board Association sample is great. Their policy just references the RSA's. Ours provides a list of school administrator duties. We can retain our policy or replace it with the School Board Association sample CF. And I have a motion to...
Double.
Replace with a short, with, I have a motion to...
Replace with a shorter version.
Replace ours with the School Board Association sample CF policy.
Double.
Second.
Discussion?
When they say school building administration, school building administration, are you talking about the principal or who are they?
Yes, the, the, the head administrator, am I correct? The head administrator of the building is the principal.
It says building principals and administration of the various programs. That's in the, under the statement of policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Went better than you thought?
Not too bad.
Still on time.
Still on time.
Son of a gun, we're not in, and, I'm sorry, we can't go any further because we're three minutes early. Gee, we didn't need our flag jackets on this one. I, I kind of was worried about this.
You're improving.
Okay. Public comment. Public comment going once, there we go. Please, if you would, sir, keep it to the agenda.
As well as a future part of the agenda as well, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
John LeBlanc from Kingston. I'm here to talk to you about a petition warrant article that's been submitted by voters of Kingston and Newton to support a partial funding of the Sandborne Ice Hockey Team. Just to give you a little history, the Sandborne Ice Hockey Team, which I believe you'll be talking about tonight in the warrant section, we started in 2012, a group of parents got together, worked at the school board at the time, and were able to convince them that they could fund a, self-fund a ice hockey program here at Sandborne. And from 2012 until present, the program has been a self-funded organization through various fundraisers that have been run by parents and supporters of the hockey program. We have not received any funding from the school district to support our efforts. And this, this petition warrant article that we placed on the ballot is looking to try to share the cost with the district after having the community of parents support that effort for this period of time. We're only looking for partial funding that's similar to what other sports have received from the district currently. I want to say that we're in our third year attempting this warrant article. So the first year, we lost by 168 votes. The second year, we lost, which was last year, we lost by 69 votes, which was very close. And after that, we had some community outreach. There was a GoFundMe page set up and a whole bunch of community members actually contributed $7,000 towards our fundraising effort through that GoFundMe page, which was nice, you know, a nice gesture from everyone saying, hey, we really support you, we voted for you, we really wish this would have passed. Now, I want to bring up the superintendent, his entry assessment identified a need to increase the extracurricular activities that are provided by the high school and by the school system. This is an extracurricular activity for the last seven years that's been funded strictly by the public, community fundraising efforts, nothing through the school. And we're looking to hopefully sway the opinion of the boards, both the budget committee and the school board, to vote in favor of this article when it comes up for discussion, because I do think that the 69 votes that we lost by last year may have been a differentiator if it would have been voted in favor of, by the boards. So I'm, I'm asking you to support this article when it comes up for discussion. It's great for the students, it's great for the kids to go watch the game, not just the ones that participate because it brings the school together, the community together as well. And, you know, this has been a partnership right now between the community of parents supporting hockey, and now I'd like to make it a partnership with the school district itself and get the funding being shared between the two. Thank you.
Tammy Fitzpatrick from Newton. Just a quick comment. I heard earlier that the PACE scores were flat year over year, and I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board a recent change in the South Portland School District. They're doing away with proficiency-based algorithm grading and they're moving back to calculated averages. And there's been a lot of riled-up communities in Scarborough, Lewiston, Portland, and Auburn regarding, regarding the proficiency algorithms. So just a suggestion that perhaps you might want to reach out and understand what they're experiencing, how it might apply to us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Once, going twice? Sold, emergency. New business, review of draft warrant articles.
I just need the, hey Pam, can I have the projector?
Where you have them in front of you, it's not on the agenda. I was going to do it with the next, next one. Not 100% sure I'll be here the next one because it's a normal off-school board meeting night, and I made doctor's appointments for off-school board meeting nights, and I, I have a rather late one. But the school board sets the position of the warrant, let's call them, which one comes first, other than by law, there's some that we have to do by law. So I, we'll put that to the next agenda. I'll come even if I come out late. I'll try to get my doctor to kick me out early.
I'll do it for you, don't you worry.
To tell you the truth, I talked to my wife about that and said, Ellie knows what to do. Being a moderator for how many years? No, never mind, you don't have to tell me that.
Three.
That, that puts an age there, you know. All right. So Phyllis, one of the things on the next agenda, I, I write them down as you know, but we're going to be looking at the position of the warrant articles.
You mean we're really going to collectively vote on which ones go where?
Uh, yeah, which ones, see, DRA, I know, just for the people to know this, there's a whole thing of 10% rule, but if, should a warrant article not be allowed because of funding, right? DRA takes the last one first. And they, now, it's not a rule, but it's what DA wants because we ran into that problem with the town a few years ago with, with the seminary and with the library. But they take the last one and say, okay, this is X number of dollars, you're within the, you're not within the 10%. Then they go to the next one, and they chop that one off until you get to 10%. So where you put it can be important.
But we're nowhere near the 10%.
No, we're not. But it's also a political thing that you want the ones you really want, like the teacher's contract first, you know.
I, you have to do that by statute. Your budget goes first.
Oh, by statute, I thought I said that, yeah, yeah.
Right. But your teacher contract, your support staff contract will be top of the list.
Right, right. It's like, it's like...
10% is...
Planning board articles have to come first in the town, you know, and all that. Yes, ma'am?
Can you be more specific? When you're talking this 10%, what do you mean?
Oh, boy.
Uh, let me, I'll make a short version.
Oh, beautiful.
Because we're SB2, municipal budget community district, we can only expend 10% more than the approved budget.
Including warrant articles.
All warrant articles cannot be, we can't go more than 10% than the budget.
Okay.
So if we have a $36 million budget, that means $3.6 million can be up to six, 3.6, can be expended in the warrant articles, but not more than the 10% of that budget.
Or it has to be voted on to override it, for instance, if you're building a school or something, you know.
Yeah, but that's a different vote.
No, I agree, but right away, people are going to say, well, wait a minute, you know.
Because that's a two-thirds, a totally different one, so.
So I, I have, I have a suggestion for the board to consider. We have these in order. You could just move to accept the order tonight.
Well, I, I think we should do that, because if we're not, if we're not near the 10%, I don't want to get into a, a watering contest as to which one goes where.
Sorry. Thank you. But I will say that Michelle, Michelle and I looked at that and we prepared an order for you that would be suggested.
Okay.
You, you may move to alter it, but I think you might be able to just get it all done tonight. So.
I think that's a great idea.
I do too.
Here we go. So Article Two is the general acceptance of reports. Shall the reports of the school district agents, auditors, committees, or officers chosen be accepted and placed on file? And it's from the reports from school district agents, auditors, committees, committees or officers, example, the annual financial audit. Do they need to vote to accept that one, or?
No.
No.
No, okay. I know there's some tonight that you're going to have to vote to accept the language. The operating budget, so I'll read this aloud into the record and then we're going to ask you folks to, to, to vote to agree with the language. Shall the Sandborne Regional School District raise inappropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant, articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or is amended by vote at the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $35,817,933? Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $35,618,920, the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Sandborne District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40, semicolon, 13X, and XVI, 10 and 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. This warrant article does not include operations in any other warrant article.
And if I could just clarify, what the board would be voting on with respect to this article is whether you're in favor of or opposed to the numbers that are presented because the language is set by statute.
Yeah.
For this one.
So they're only voting on the money. Right, so...
And this is the money that we agreed with, with the budget committee?
Yes.
Correct.
So we need to know.
And you've previously adopted the default budget, so really this is...
So what do you need, a motion?
Motion to accept, a second. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, right, yeah, okay. Someone second?
Can be seconded.
Discussion?
I've made, made my concerns about this budget. No, several meetings, so I don't need to repeat myself.
Okay, all right. For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
But that's a four to two vote? Just make sure I'm hearing that correctly?
Four to two, Larry's not here tonight.
Yeah, we'll have to list one absence.
Yes.
Phyllis, you got all that right? Okay. Um, so again...
You'll make that correction on here, someone will.
Yeah, that's, so this is a draft and we'll be filling in the numbers.
Yeah, and we'll have that already for the Budcom hearing tomorrow night.
Yep.
Right, so these are the same slides that will be used tomorrow night at the budget hearing. We decided to use them tonight to practice and share the same information consistently. So if you look at this next one, it just kind of gives a little clearer picture of what the two different budgets are, the default budget and the proposed budget. In the default budget calculation, it's just important for folks to remember that it was the same as the prior year's budget. There are some changes required by law, but almost all of ours are special education. And there are one-time costs. We didn't have hardly any, I don't think we had any one-time costs.
Yeah, we didn't have any.
Article four, professional staff collective bargaining agreement. So I'll read this to, just for the record.
If I could just comment, I want to go back just for one minute. We need to remember the one-time costs that are being backed out or the one-time costs that were budgeted because folks might recall that we had one-time costs, but some of those items weren't not in the budget. They were things that we had to...
Such as the sleazy roof.
Roof.
At the gym is a one-time cost, but it wasn't a budgeted one-time cost.
So that's why it's not backed out.
Right. Good, thank you. That's important to clarify. All right, Article four, the professional staff collective bargaining agreement.
Hold on one second. Ellie's thinking.
Got you, never mind.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I can see the wheels.
It's okay.
See the look? There's the look.
Yeah, I know, I know. No.
If someone asks me, I need to know.
You do need to know, and, and please stop us. I do tend to go a little bit quick and I'm happy to slow down. Article four, professional staff collective bargaining agreement. I'll just read this aloud for the record. Shall the Sandborne Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for professional staff reached between the school board and the Sandborne Regional Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits, the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Year one, $508,964. Year two, $529,794. And further to raise the appropriate sum of $508,964 for the 2019-20 fiscal year, with such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels. Tax impact for Kingston is $34 per 1,000 and Newton 44, I'm sorry, 30 cents.
34 cents.
34 cents per 1,000 and 44 cents per 1,000. I'm going to give myself a heart attack there. So we need a motion to accept this.
Hold on a second.
Okay, I want some discussion on this. Ellie, is this going to Sandbornize us? Because I don't see anywhere where it says first year or three-year, two-year contract.
I'm not sure of that either, but I would want to have the year, I wouldn't say year one, I'd say if it's 2018, 19, then that's what it should say, and year two should say 2019, 20.
Do you?
We can add that.
Anybody know what I'm talking about?
Put year one and then it's, you know, 19.
Because the term is, we, a number of years back, we had a problem because the warrant article wasn't clear in determining, in, in binding the district for a three-year contract. And so now they talk about Sandbornizing.
Sandbornizing, and that is true.
Warrant articles mean that you're clearly stating that the first year of a two-year contract and that you collectively, by, by approving one, year one, you're also approving year two.
It's a multi-year.
That becomes part of your default budget, unless the statutes have changed. That's...
I, I'll just share, if I could, that we do have this, this has already gone through a first review with the Department of Revenue and our attorney. So we'll confirm that we can make that modification because some of these are literally set by statute and you can't change the format, but I think this is a small addition that we should be okay to add that.
They should not be an issue at all because it should be clear, but...
Is that what you wanted?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I think we should move to adopt that, and I'll send it to Diane.
And, and this is going to be important. Are you, Phyllis, are you going to be taking the minutes at the school board meeting deliberative? Okay, so just very quickly, correct me if I'm wrong on some of these. They had a contract, because you, you said you weren't sure what it was. They had a contract. It was a multi-year contract, but it didn't reflect in the minutes that it was a multi-year contract. Even though I believe Muriel, the chairman of the school board went and said, I did say that at the meeting, it wasn't in the minutes, Phyllis. So therefore, the Supreme Court, when always Supreme Court said, the people didn't know it was a multi-year contract, it's null and void except for the one year.
That's why the language in the article is important to make sure.
Right, so that's why, so... Right, so that's why, so, and they actually have a term now, and it's not only used in, in, in New Hampshire, it's used, my brother's a firefighter, it's used there, down in Massachusetts, Sandbornizing. So we've got to make sure the people know that this is the first year of a multi-year contract. We don't wanna be Sandbornized again. So that's kinda the, quick to it. So just.
I think that's why it said year one and year two, but I put the years in there.
I think wording wouldn't hurt, wouldn't, wording wouldn't have hurt to say, "This is the first year of a multi-year contract," the first year being, or something of that nature.
Had contracts where we would, we would be paying for the current year.
Right.
You know, but it's very clear that it's the next two years.
Well, it's important to recognize that the voters are approving the, the, the two-year contract, but the first year, which is next year, is the only one that we can really accurately estimate at this time. So these are estimated increases for years one and two.
But it's important it's in the minutes, and it's important we say it at the deliberative.
Well, and Diane Goro did read this and approve it.
Well, so, uh, I was. I was, I happen to be one of the teachers that was Sandbornized.
Okay.
So I'm a little more sensitive perhaps. You know?
Yeah.
Okay, so, move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So, um, it's important to note that, I'll just quickly say that in, uh, year one and year two, the wage increase was one point seven-five percent, two point two-five percent. It's a co-curricular activities increase, uh, that, that needed to be there because it had been left out of the previous contract. It's a very small amount of money overall. Um, and then there was, uh, the health insurance has gone down one percent, excuse me, one percent each year to eighty-eight percent at the end of the second year. So again, there are the costs on a, on a clear slide, which I thought for the budget committee would be really helpful to just have that slide available. Art, Article Five, yep.
Doesn't Five have to have, oh, you haven't started Five, but I don't see the tax impact on Five.
I'm sorry, the tax impact on Five.
There is none. We're talking about Article, so when, let's go to Article Five. You're talking about Article Five.
You're moving to Five, right?
Yeah, let me, let me keep going.
Okay.
Let me explain it and then answer questions, 'cause it's easier. So this, this article is, uh, shall the Sandborns, shall the Sandborn School District, if Article Four is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Four cost items only? And so there's no cost to this, the, the cost is in the previous arti- article. This is just to say, if it fails, can we come back, if the board wants to, do they wanna come back to the table? So we're asking you, do you want that option?
Come back to the table, I mean, to go back to the voters and ask for them for more money.
Wow.
Well, or different, a different amount.
A different amount.
Alternatively, without this language, the board is restricted in that they cannot bring it forward until the next year's voting.
And this language does not say that you have to go back to the table, it just gives you the option to do. Right, see, it says here.
That's due.
It says, uh, um, if, if Article Number Four is, if you read down below, if Article Number Four is defeated, the school board will have the option to call one special meeting.
So let's make a motion and we'll have a discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I just wanna read something to you. I, I get a bulletin call in the Hampshire Municipal Association, that's where this kinda came from here. Says, "Collective bargaining agreement, special meeting. If the voters do not approve the cost items of collective bargaining agreement, the governing body may call one special meeting to try again without obtaining superior court permission. In order to do this, however, the governing body must be sure to include the following language in the original article." Reason I'm bringing this up, because this is not in the original article, this is now Article Five. So the statute says, should be in the original article, and it says, "Shall," and then it says, "the municipality. If Article so-and-so is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its opinion to this article, cost items only, RSA, whatever." So I'm not sure if you can make a separate warrant article for this, because, and again, I get this from NHMA, you might wanna call, you know, the attorneys, but it says here, "In order to do this, however, the governing body must be sure to include the following language in the original article."
Thank you.
So you've got two articles here, I'm not sure you can do that.
Well, there are two separate.
I think it might have to be in the original article, is what I'm saying.
It's gonna confuse the voters.
It is, that's why Diane Goro drafted all this.
I have no problem with it, I'm just reading what, you know, goes through.
This has been done in pretty much every deliberative that I've been to. You could pull up a previous warrant article, you did have it reviewed, right? But you could pull up a previous one and see if that's how it was done in the previous.
I'm not sure, that was two thousand sixteen, I checked that and I don't think I saw it, the one before that may have had it. Because I looked at two thousand sixteen, I'm pretty sure I, I was surprised that it wasn't there.
Could we vote on it, subject to modification per regulation?
Sure.
That sounds good. You move that, Jim?
Sure.
I, I'm not worried about this at all, Diane developed it, I think it's gonna be fine, but I'm happy to have the flexibility.
We had lawyers go all the way to the Supreme Court on the last one.
It's been a while, Jim, relax.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I just wanna, look, I, I don't want anything to muck this up, that's all.
I agree, I totally agree with that.
We've worked hard on this and, and I don't wanna do that either.
Yeah, we did.
Jim and Larry too, especially, with all the time they've put into it, I don't wanna.
Okay, so.
So I do have comments about this, though.
Well, wait a minute, because I think you just made a change of the motion.
Yeah, oh, so we're gonna, okay, so we gotta vote on that.
Yeah.
So we have to vote on the original motion and then we'll make, then we'll, we can go, go down and defeat it if you might, and then we'll have you give another motion. Okay, so all in favor of the original motion? All, all opposed? Okay, okay, so the motion goes down. Now he's gonna give another motion that he, he wants to add to. We can always go back to this motion originally again.
Okay.
But he.
You're confusing me, and that's not easy.
This is called payback. No, you see what I'm saying? In other words, you, you wanna make changes in that, and we could go with by amendment, I have no problem.
Retract your first and your second, you wanna bring on the motion amended by making the following stipulation.
That's fine, we'll do it that way. I'm glad I've got you here, she's my voluntarian. Okay, Jim, what you got?
Well, it's what.
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, motion approved, so it's modification, uh, modification regulations.
So that it complies with regulations.
Okay, I'll, let me, let me clarify. What, what I heard Jim say is he wants to make a motion to, to approve this pending legal review.
And approval by legal review.
And approval by legal review.
Right.
Right, 'cause you need clarification.
And if we wanna be more specific, and you might wanna do this, Ally, is say, is say, uh, um, either approved as its own warrant article or added to the previous warrant article is really what he's proposing.
Right, we need clarification whether or not it should be part of the original Article Four in support of the, the professional staff agreement. And if that's the case, if the statute is pretty clear that it should be part of that article, then it should be no Five in there. It should be one with.
And I'll, I'll give you the RSA, it's RSA thirty-one colon five, three. You're up.
I'll be happy to share that with Attorney Goro and Representative of the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue does produce, uh, list of recommended warrant articles and the wording, and these two are separate. So, uh, yeah, I will see, though, I understand now what the question is, is whether or not we can combine them, I don't.
Whether or not we have to combine them.
No, you do not have to, because they are recommended as separate articles. Unlike the operating budget, which you might go back and look at, the operating budget has in its article the option to have a special meeting. It's not suggested that way by the Department of Revenue in their list of recommended articles. So, but I don't know that you were prohibited from grouping them.
I, I'm reading from NHMA's, uh, magazine, they give out every color, and this is, this is interpretation by the author. So that doesn't necessarily make the author correct.
But did, did that suggest that they be, did it stipulate as one article that have both?
Can you read that again?
Really?
Sure, it says, it says, "In order to do this, however, the governing body must be sure to include the following language in the original article. Shall the municipality, if Article such-and-such is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address the article, cost items only. Article such-and-such, cost item only, RSA thirty-one colon five, three."
It's confusing to me, because if.
Does that just pertain to budget items?
So it's confusing.
This has to do with CBA, the collective bargaining agreement.
It's confusing to me, because if you put that language in the first article, and that is defeated, you're by, you're by definition defeating it.
I agree with you, and that's two items in one warrant.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, no, so that it was.
You're gonna have the same situation on the support staff one.
So, so.
I'm only, I, 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 I'm just.
We need clarification on it, we just wanted to write once.
I will certainly ask, um, this was sort of given the okay my, our, our legal counsel and Department of Revenue as it stands. So I know that we can have it this way, I don't know if we can put them together as one, but I will certainly find that out.
I didn't like it either when I read it, because it's two questions in one.
Yeah.
Right? You know, and, and you, you're not supposed to do that in warrant articles.
If we can do it either way, we should do it the simplest way.
Correct.
Which is this way, because it's clear.
Right.
So I, I, I would suggest to the board.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, you approve it this way, I call Diane in the morning. Diane says, "Oh no, we made a mistake." Then I either have, I, I basically, you guys would have to get together tomorrow night at six o'clock and have a special meeting and do that before the BudCon.
Or have an electronic vote.
Yep.
Have that recorded.
And then have it recorded and put in the minutes at the next meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, we'll have a straight down tomorrow.
The difference with the operating budget is that language is crafted by statute. We cannot change it, and it's not asking the question, it's telling you that there's the option of a special meeting. So I, but we'll follow up on that.
Sorry to start this, but you see why I did it.
Oh, no, I agree, you did the right thing. So where are we at with the motion on the floor at this point?
Well, the motion on the floor is to have it verified, if I can paraphrase it this way, verify with legal, and whichever legal says is the appropriate way, that's the way we'll do it.
Alright, so do you want a motion that affects us, we move the, we approve Article Five pending, uh.
Legal review.
Legal review, good, yeah, okay.
So moved.
Okay, second, do I have a second?
No, uh, you, Ally seconded that, Corey made the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No. Um, I'm not for this, if the voters vote it down, I don't think we should incur the expense of bringing it to them again.
The only, the only, I, I would agree, normally, Jim, I would agree with you on that one. However, this is the collective bargaining agreement, and it would be really nice if we could go back to the table and make some concessions or something, and to make it more palatable to the voters the sooner the better, so that we don't go a full year without a contract. The only reason I liked it, I would normally agree with you, 'cause we didn't used to have this, you know.
Is that an option to renegotiate?
That's what I was just gonna say, this is at the option, it says right in here, the statute.
No, is it an option to renegotiate the agreement, agreement?
Well, that, 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 that I don't know. But i- it's at our option, we go forward, and I think your argument, which I see, is, is gonna be made then if it doesn't pass.
Okay. And, and I think too, it's really important to recognize that the margin by which it doesn't pass might dictate whether the board exercises this option.
We talked about that, yes.
Right, so, so if it's a hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty, then it's fifty-fifty, but if it's five percent away from passing, the board might say, yeah, maybe we, we can look at some options to get this to pass, I don't know.
Right, okay.
If it's defeated by five or ten votes, that's different than defeated by a hundred.
Have a real shave. Okay.
Okay.
Article Six.
Okay, that took care of Five?
Did my vote?
So we didn't have a vote.
We got a vote, move the vote.
Whoa, ah, my bad. All, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Alright, so.
Thank you, Tom, uh, thank you, Joe, thank you, Jim.
I apologize, there's a typo here, and I will fix that, that should be, can you mark that, Article Six? Special meeting, professional staff. This is, uh, supposed to be the, uh, um, support staff.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I will fix the header on this, I apologize. Um, so this is actually, can I, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna do that, 'cause I don't want that up anywhere. Uh, so, we, we did negotiate a three-year contract with the paraprofessionals and the support staff. The first year, the estimated increase is eighty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three. Oh, I'll read the whole thing, just for the record, the way that I did the other ones. Shall the Sandborne Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement for support staff reached between the school board and the Sandborne Regional Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year? Year one, eighty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three, year two, ninety-one thousand four hundred and eighty, and year three, eighty-six thousand sixty-eight. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels. And I will say, before we move forward, we'll add the dates to years one, two, and three, same as we did in the prior, prior one. I'll do that while you discuss.
Can I just probably put FY for fiscal year?
I, I get very nervous about changing Diane Goro's language when she's reviewed this, ERA has to.
No, I meant when you were putting the, the nineteen-twenty, the year nineteen-twenty.
Oh, sure, we could add that, that's fine.
We can ask them, too.
You really need to do that, so voters know what they're voting for. You really do.
Yeah, it's a transparency thing.
It's not gonna, exactly, it's not gonna, uh, deter from the accuracy of the article, it's gonna.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So for now I did that, Michelle may wanna add FY, just 'cause it's fiscal year, but we'll, we'll take care of that, we'll clean that up.
I mean, you can look back at prior years and see how it's done, but.
So again, I went over this, I did wanna note that the, uh, conversation with the paraprofessionals, um, there is a change in their healthcare as well, it went from eighty, ninety percent to eighty-nine percent in year one, eighty-eight point five percent in year two, and eighty-eight percent in year three. Um, and the impact on this is six cents per thousand in Kingston and seven cents per thousand in Newton. So, uh, Chair Collier, I hope that will help you tomorrow night, see, you try to keep it clean.
I think that'll give good information to the budget committee.
Good, thank you.
And we're gonna make the same request of legal on this one.
Yeah, same, same, it'll be the same. So we'll need to, uh, we had a similar Article Seven here, is, uh, shall the Sandborne Regional School District, if Article Six is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Six cost items only. So I need.
Approval pending legal review.
Yeah, 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 same, same as the previous one, thank you.
Second? Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone?
Yep.
Article Eight. Shall the Sandborne Regional School District vote to amend Article Three of the Articles of Agreement between the towns of Kingston and Newton to delete the word elementary from the sentence, "Elementary schools shall be maintained in Kingston and Newton. All other provisions of the Articles of Agreement shall remain in effect." Uh, so I wanna be clear that the reason for this is that the elementary school is defined by state statute as grades pre-K to six. Um, it'll allow greater flexibility in free needs for the district, such as what, uh, Miss Lassio asked about with, uh, moving sixth grade to the high school. It just really frees up our ability to utilize the facilities and layout of the district based on declining enrollment and needs in the future.
We're not in compliance now.
We're not in compliance now.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Question?
This requires a three-fifths vote, I believe?
Uh, I was under the impression that it was a simple majority.
A simple majority to change the Articles of Agreement?
We can ask that question. Typically, she would put the notation, if it required anything more than a simple majority.
If it does, we'll add that notation, yeah. And, and, uh, would you be okay if I add that down in the bottom, just saying this requires a three-fifths vote?
That would be traditional.
Well, that's, that's required.
Yeah, that's usually where they put it.
I, I'm not sure.
It's a good question.
Okay.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll check the articles, they might say. Capital Reserve Fund Unanticipated Educational Expenses, so as you know on my entry plan, this is an important topic, um, and so what we did is we, oh, Michelle, you got to add the estimated tax impact for that on the bottom. It, oh, there is an N is there?
On the next page.
Okay. So, shall the Sanborn Regional School District vote to establish an unanticipated educational expenses capital reserve fund under RSA three fifty-one for the purpose, uh, three fif- thirty-five semicolon one, I'm sorry, for the purpose of supporting the cost of unanticipated educational expenditures and to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to be placed in the fund, further to name the school board as agents to expend from the fund. This sum to come from June thirtieth fund balance, available for transfer on July one, no amount to be raised from taxation.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
How...
So I was specifically asking.
How does seventy-five thousand dollars not have a tax impact?
That is an argument for discussion that you can take either way. Now, if we're not raising money fro- by taxation.
It's not giving it back.
But you're not giving it back.
But we're not giving it back. So what is it? Well, it's different pockets, same, same pants, I don't know. I've been on both sides of the fence on that, um, and...
Let me give the rationale.
Diane, well, Diane Goro, so there's no...
But because we're not raising it by taxation, that is why you no tax impact.
No, it's not the money.
Right, it's not new money. They did the same thing in Kingston, for those of Kingston, with the library. They took money from the dump fund, which was, you know, and they said no tax impact. Well, is there or isn't there, you know?
There was.
I, 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 I have argued both sides depending on which one is benefit to me, you know? Welcome to politics, right?
So can I just share the next slide, which is the rationale? The rationale is that it, it saves funds from year to year to cover unanticipated costs. So if the goal of the board in the BudCon is to tighten up the budget and shore up some of the, the areas that, that, um, maybe don't get expended from year to year but are necessary to have in the event of an emergency, this makes it clearer what those funds are for. This is, I, I just want to be clear, in, in my opinion, this is not about seventy-five thousand dollars. It's about establishing the fund. The fund should be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we have, last year, we had three students who may go out of district for special education. Thank goodness we have a wonderful special ed director and a hard-working staff. It would have been six hundred thousand dollars had those three children gone out of district. And having, uh, reserve funds helps us, there's a two hundred thousand dollar reserve right now, roughly approximately, I'm using superintendent math, not business manager math, I just want to be clear for the record, estimated two hundred thousand dollar amount, that would have paid for one of them. If we have, if we have a situation where a num- we had ten students move into Bakersfield this year, luckily, in one grade, luckily, they had enough room in their class sizes to accommodate that, but if they hadn't, we don't have a, a, a fund to, to cover the expense of adding a teacher there. So, and I, I think it's important to recognize that if we're going to look at fiscal transparency, then we should have money in accounts that are for those situations that are expended pub- in a public meeting by the board in a very clear and transparent way. And so I'm just, this addresses two concerns. One is that we're running a thirty-five million dollar ship without clear emergency funds. We are. It's really concerning, it, it's frankly, one quarter of the gray hair you see of Ghanesi last year and a half. The second thing that I worry about with this is that people made it very clear to me, from every angle, that transparency was a problem. And I, I would agree with that concern that transparency's been a problem, and this makes it incredibly transparent when you say, we had a, we had a situation where we needed a staff member to cover X, I bring it to the board at a public meeting on a public agenda, and you decide to fund that. Right, that's the goal of these funds, and you'll see there's another warrant article, but this is just to establish it. We're going to have to fund it over a number of years to build it up.
Okay, now, let me just, if I can, because Tom and I had, and Michelle had lengthy discussions on this, came down to two questions. One, is this an important fund to have? And then two, how do we fund it? But to give you an idea, and this is what we talked about. If I'm correct, Michelle, and I think you and I talked about it, it's called the three-finger rule, you may have heard if you've been in budgeting, right? In Kingston, we have about eight hundred thou- eight hundred million dollars worth of value of property. Therefore, for every hu- hundred thousand dollars we spend, right, it's going to be one-eighth of a dollar. Okay, for every eight million we spend, it'd be a dollar for every, okay? I looked at this, and when we discussed how we were going to do that, I looked at, if you notice, this one's seventy-five thousand, the other one's twenty-five thousand, so in keeping that, if there was a tax impact, if we weren't doing it this way, it works out to be about twelve and a half cents divided by fifty-four, forty-five. So it would be about six cents per thousand for Newton and about seven cents per thousand in Kingston. Right, now, if I'm wrong on this, or my numbers are wrong, or disagree, anybody disagrees with me because you're going to tell me anyway, but you can see where, when, when we were sitting down coming up with this, first, do we need to fund? Yes, I think we do. Second, how do we then fund it? Well, do we tell the people we want to tax them, or do we want to say, you know what, we've already taxed you on this, we've already taken that money from you, why don't we do it this way? And if this helps you, I don't know if it helps it go down a little easier, if my numbers are correct, you're talking about six cents per thousand and about seven cents per thousand. So, I don't know if that helps you, but that, that was my rationale. Go for it.
I'm going to say it's easier than that, though.
I'll get, Corey, Corey.
It's easier than that.
Okay, go ahead, Corey, go ahead. It's just hard to tell.
It's not, and this is probably where the fireside chat conversation is important. Uh, take us, for example, a year ago, we gave how much money back to the community? And now, two years later, how much was it? What was it, one point five million?
One point five million.
Right, okay. Two years later, we're asking for half a million dollars because we have a capital improvement plan that needs to be funded. We're creating a massive roller coaster ride for the taxpayer. And so there is a huge tax impact when we don't plan ahead. So we need to go ahead and show that in a layman term, that if we don't go, this is going to a reserve, so we don't have to ask for additional monies in the future as that reserve gets built up.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? Let's just, let's just be plain, simple English, not do the math, just show them in a graphical, pleasing manner. If you do this, you create a dividend. If you go ahead and do this, you create a spike. If you do, want to create that spike, you're then going to be saying no, which then you're putting it down. So let's just, so, I, all of them trying to advise us to, Pete, I love the fact that you're thorough and you're giving us the right information, I think we just need to be very generic, so the young man at the end of the table, the student can say, hey, I get this. And no offense, not to say you don't get it, Adam, but I mean, the point being is, I want you to be able to say, well, this is what impacts me too, because it's impacted my law. Let's just keep it simple, stupid, and, sorry. Maybe I'm getting irritable and tired, I don't know.
I want to say, Jim, before, before we go further, in transparency, full disclosure, these are numbers we put together. The seventy-five thousand doesn't have to be seventy-five. You think it should be more, go for more. You think it should be less, go for less. These are numbers I came for the ease of the hundred thousand, and when we're explaining to the people. You want to drop it to fifty, or twenty-five, or zero, that, yeah, that's what we're here about. That's what we're going to be discussing.
First of all, I'm not arguing against this fund.
Right, and that's okay, yeah.
Okay. But I, one, for, for one thing, we have, as far as the reference to special ed and the kids that might have moved in, this doesn't cover that. We have a special education expendable fund. That's for special ed.
But what happens is if that fund becomes depleted, which is what would have happened, then it has to come out of regular ed.
Okay.
So it does.
Okay.
But not directly. So you are correct that this isn't allocated to that purpose.
Yeah.
But there's nothing allocated to regular ed right now at all.
Right.
And so what happens is you're going to keep having these waves with your taxes.
I get it.
Until we set this up.
I'm not arguing against you.
No, I know you're not, but I think for transparency, I, I want to just say that, that I agree with you too, Jim, that, that directly it doesn't tie to that, but it would happen if, if, if the, if the special education fund were spent fully, then you have to go to regular ed funds, because really, there's ultimately only one budget.
And the language of this is such that you can use it to cover special ed costs. The reverse is not true. You cannot use a special ed fund to cover regular ed costs.
That's why we look very hard at how to word this.
The other issue is, to say there's no tax impact is not accurate.
Right.
I, I can't disagree with you there.
Because there is a tax impact on the amount of money that it, at the end of the year, is available to give back to the town. I think this is a worthwhile fund to have. I think we need it, I think we need to build it up over time, like you said.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with starting it at seventy-five thousand, but I think we need to tell people that this will affect how much money is returned to the town at the end of the year.
Well, and that's why it says it comes from the unreserved fund balance. That, that transparency's built in. The question is, will they understand it?
They will.
Right, because that's, that was my concern in this.
The ambulance and the fire trucks and, we've done that before.
Oh, we, we, there's probably six warrant articles in Kingston that they put money aside.
The leftover money of their budget they have.
Right.
It still, it says zero tax impact.
Well, that's, so that's something that, again, we'd have to run by the attorney in the Department of Revenue, because...
I'm pretty sure that's right.
Because technically, you're not taxing people to raise that money.
You're not raising and appropriating.
So I think we're talking two different things. There's, there's the, the Department of Revenue's definition of tax impact, because they're looking at how much you are going to raise.
We say at the deliberative session that it, it's not a, it, it really isn't a no tax impact, because they're not giving you the money back to reduce your taxes, so...
Right, and I, Jim, we, I wanted you to know, I knew we'd need to discuss this tonight because I agree with you completely. It's so important for everyone to understand that one of the reasons why we're looking, if you go back to slide one, why we're looking at more than a dollar's tax impact per thousand for the, for the, really honestly, two percent increase in the budget, is because we gave back one point five million and didn't hold the five hundred thousand that could have been used to stabilize the...
We get that.
But this is trying to formalize that a little bit, right? Like, try to...
Right, and that, that hasn't happened with the schools. It used to be that the money had to go back.
Yeah.
That's true.
This is new.
It is new.
Maybe in a few years, but it's still relatively new.
Well, there's other reserve funds that have been funded by holding money back.
Correct, correct, but it's a rule.
They were covered by statute.
Yeah, but, but...
Like the special ed.
If you didn't spend the money, that was returned to the district automatically.
Retaining the fund balance, the ability to retain up to two point five percent is, is relatively new.
By stat- not by statute, but DRA recommends that towns keep anywhere from, I think it's eight to about thirteen, fourteen percent for emergency type things, so they, they actually recommend you do that. Until recently, schools didn't have that vehicle.
I have seen warrant articles that said zero tax impact, but will impact monies that are available to return to taxpayers.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I, I, but, but it's elementary here. If we don't go ahead, if we go back to last year, there's a tax impact.
It's hard what he's got here.
I know.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, but, um, the thing is, how many people show up to the deliberative session? Three, three, maybe four hundred if you get a great turnout? How many voters are there?
Well, you know, that's...
But you're not, you're not really being transparent.
How many people actually vote out of five thousand, six hundred?
But that's, that's, you're not being withheld information.
No, but I mean, it's brutal. It is, it's... And, and that, and Jim, I, I'm not, I, I want to hear feedback, because we could craft this.
Yeah.
So I, I'm simply, I do want to have a little bit of a dialogue about this with you all as a team, because this was put out here to say, it says clearly that this sum is to come from a July thirtieth fund balance transfer, balance available for transfer on July first. It does not come from future appropriation of taxes, it's not giving it back.
What happens if we had zero money left?
Then we wouldn't get it. It wouldn't be funded.
Exactly.
You could, the, the fund would be created, but there would be no money transferred into it.
This really establishes the fund, so the future boards can then decide, do they want to put money in, not want to put money in. And I, like I said, we came down with a hundred thousand because I looked at the tax rate, and I said for six and seven cents, you know? But I have no problem reducing it, I mean, Tom and I and Michelle talked about that.
I'm not arguing the amount. I just...
I think it's a good start.
I think something to think about is to add into that available for transfer on July first, which would be funds that were returned to the town.
Well, we can make sure we bring that up, you know?
Otherwise, it would be funds that are returned to the town.
It gets more...
I will be...
I know you don't want to do that because you don't want people to know that necessarily.
No, that's not it. I, Laura crafted this. We actually do want people to know that.
Okay, good.
So that, that's the point, is that, that's what I'm trying to be so careful about here, is that actually, I, directly, do want people to know that that money would have gone back. The problem is that legally, we're not taxing them.
There are some...
We're not appropriating to raise the money.
Now, we're, now, we're not going to agree, we need to agree to disagree.
Yes.
Because we're not going to get it, I, I understand Jim's point, you're right.
I agree with Jim.
Because it's, because it's not being used to reduce the tax impact of expenditures any year.
Right.
On the other hand, it doesn't raise and appropriate new money, so it doesn't have an address. All positions are correct.
Right.
I would suggest is that you put in the warrant article that after July first, the July first sentence, that this would be money that otherwise would be returned, returned to the town.
So what we could probably say is this sum to come from July thirtieth fund balance available for transfer on July first, and then in parentheses, instead of being returned to taxpayers.
I think that's, I've seen that before.
I don't, I don't like that, that language, but that's okay.
You can choose the language, I was just trying to...
Um, we can certainly propose language. It would need to be approved by the attorney and approved by the Department of Revenue, because they may not allow it. That some of these, some of these articles are set in stone almost.
That, that's an important point. I'm going to give you a quick example. No, no, it's, it's important, because DRA has the final say.
Right.
When we, in Kingston, raise money each year for a fire station, we raise inappropriate. Now we've got a half a million dollars, we want to buy a fire truck, we still have to use the wording to raise inappropriate, even though we've got the money in the fund. So it looks like we're raising appropriate twice. So what I'm saying is, as an example, we have to go pretty much from where DRA goes. We had a discussion the other day, and if DRA questions us on it, we called Diane Goro, we had quite a discussion with her, and she said we could do it. So we can say to DRA, "On advice of council," this is the way we put this wording.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I just want to, I don't want people to be misled because there may not be a lot of wiggle room, but we can certainly ask.
So we can vote with the understanding that we're going to explore that, and we will let you know in writing.
Okay.
You put out the word, "No amount to be raised from new taxation."
Yep.
Additional.
Clarify the other side.
Our additional taxation.
Let us do this. If you'll move the idea, we'll do the homework tomorrow morning and email it out what the outcome is. Because I have no problem with adding any of that language if it's legal, personally. I didn't know what to do with it myself. I just went with what the lawyer said, but we have to make sure it passes muster.
Okay, could we put in "No amount to be raised from additional taxation"?
Well, that says that. It says zero impact.
Yes, but.
Doesn't that, that "No amount to be raised by additional taxation"?
That's redundant, I guess.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't explain the other side of it.
Okay.
So what we're looking for is language that says which otherwise would have been returned to the community.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get off this one here, guys.
No, no, I agree. Okay, all in favor?
All right, Article ten, same kind of thing. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate a sum of up to, I'm sorry, shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate a sum up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the capital improvement and maintenance capital reserve fund previously established? This sum to come from June thirtieth fund balance available for transfer on July one, no amount to be raised from taxation.
Motion.
Before we go there, Michelle?
I just wanted to add just one clarifying item. I noticed that in Diane Goro's recommended changes, we missed one. She just asked that we put, instead of school district, Sandborn Regional School District.
Okay.
That's school district.
Yeah, it's.
I got it.
All in, all cap.
Okay. Motion?
Second?
Discussion?
Same comments as the other one.
Ditto.
Do we want to put any additional funding in this one? Do we want to go fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand like the other one?
Well, I see your point, but I don't know if we want to increase it because we're really looking to establish this, you know. And I, whatever you want, Cory, anybody can talk about it. If you, I hate to say it this way, if you trust Michelle, Tom and I, this is where we come up with twenty-five. It can be changed.
Okay.
Actually, what's the difference?
Obviously, the concerns I have are just literally adding more to the bucket and the perception.
Don't have to agree with me. Give me my logic.
We already have the spot.
Yeah.
We're just putting more money.
Putting more money in it.
First thing.
I move that we adopt a ten.
Okay. Second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Are you in, I'm sorry, were you in favor?
Everyone was in favor. You're in favor, right?
Unanimous.
Jim?
Jim, favor Jim?
You said you were.
Yes, I am, but with the provision.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to check on that.
I'm raising stands for what I'm saying.
Now, if I may, this is a petition warrant article, and as such, we cannot change anything to change its intent. We could, but they very, very rarely change anything because we don't want to be messing with anybody's intent. So you want to be careful about what we discuss or what we want to add.
We should change the damn thing in this. I move that we adopt our own level as printed.
Well, you want to, well, we probably want to read it.
Okay.
Yeah, please read it out for the public.
Thank you.
I think that's the first time you got ahead of everybody. That was pretty.
Well, we need a move.
Yeah.
She's looking at the clock.
It looks like this was copied and pasted, copied and pasted from last year because it says not recommended by the budget.
Oh, thank you.
It should also say.
Doesn't have the school board.
It should say, doesn't have school board either. That's okay. We, they, you probably changed the amounts and then said, "That's good. I got what I wanted." Been there, done that. Okay. Okay. Did I have any motion?
I have to read it. I have to read it.
You got five seconds.
I'm fixing it. I have to read it.
We've already moved in second, but he's got to read it for you.
Oh, the last time he was reading it before the motion. Sure, that's fine.
Usually, well, anyway, all right. Submitted by petition, "On behalf of the self-funded Sandborn Ice Hockey Team and registered voters of Kingston and Newton, shall the Sandborn School District raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars to partially fund the Sandborn, I'm sorry, fund the high school hockey team? These funds will be used to cover non-ice time expenses to include away game transportation, coaching stipends, game official fees, uniforms and athletic dues and fees. The Sandborn Ice Hockey Team is playing its sixth season with the last fours of varsity program. The costs associated with each of the six seasons has been covered by the fundraising efforts of the Sandborn Ice Hockey Boosters Club. This article provides partial funding for varsity ice hockey with an additional fourteen thousand five hundred of funding to come from Sandborn Ice Hockey Boosters Club to cover one, I'm sorry, cover ice time expenses." Did I get it? Is there a second close on that parentheses?
There was the original.
Where does that go?
Just at the very end.
Oh, yeah, at the very end. Okay. I'll add it now. Thank you, sir.
Have you got a comment?
Well, I think we need a motion, right?
We have the motion. We have the second.
Who submitted it?
I thought Jim did.
Jim, second?
Yeah, I second.
Cory?
All right, so I support this, and I hope the rest of the board supports this as well. I recognize that ultimately, over the years, as Mr. LeBlank, prior board chairman as well, that ultimately, the votes have been going more in favor from the community perspective. First and foremost, not a single board member here actually was part of the board that voted this in years ago. So we should take that into account that whatever prior history and ever, ever prior board had thought of and why they allowed for this to enter into the system, like they brought it in, and they're very smart to do so because ultimately, it's giving kids an alternative sport to play. We should be supporting this just like we support athletics throughout the community. And if we say no to this, how is that fair to the students who this is their passion? Let's remind ourselves, when we hear the words that it's been self-funded and that they've been going out and doing their tagging, whatever, like, what's the word I'm looking for here? Whatever events that they've done to go ahead and like, self-raised, is taking away from curriculum time and/or ice time and/or family time. So why don't we just be smart? Why don't we go ahead and vote for this in support of the fact that there's an athletic program that's been sustainable, that ultimately has, is a varsity team? Let's also remind ourselves that this came in as, not as a varsity team, and they get to the level of adoption and excitement, and you know, someone like Mr. LeBlank has helped get them there. So can we all just like, think about, if we say no to this, why are we, we should be saying no to athletics as a whole? And I don't agree with that whatsoever because it keeps kids off the street and gives them something to do, and creates family memories in it, what's worse. So I ask you to support this.
Hey, I have a question, if I may. Am I correct? And Ellie, you're probably better at this than I am. You're asking for ten thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. That means that as long as it's a hockey team, the school district only pays ten thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars?
Not binding the district to do that. No, it's establishing a line item, isn't it, for the hockey team in the budget?
Yes, but the warrant article the people are voting on is saying that we will only give them ten thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars.
This year.
This year, okay.
But it does not have to be in the warrant, except an article next year.
Okay, all right.
It should have been part of the school budget two years ago.
That was my, that was another question I had.
In my opinion, so.
Warrant articles are usually good for one year.
I understand that, but this is establishing it. It goes into your budget, and if the school board wants to fund it, they will do so next year.
Okay, now my next.
They don't have to do a warrant article.
Okay, no, okay. My next question is, because I think it could be interpreted, I'm just asking because I'm not sure.
That's all right.
Fourteen thousand five hundred comes from the Sandborn Ice Hockey Boosters Club. So let's assume this passes, and it goes in as a line item into the budget. Does that mean that next year, the boosters, Sandborn Ice Boosters is going to contribute to fourteen five, or are they scot-free?
I don't know what they're going to do next year, neither do you.
No, but, well, I'm wondering if the warrant article is saying they will from now on add that.
No, it binds you just for this year. Accept that it creates a line item in your budget for a hockey team, in which case, my guess is that the building administrator is going to come to the superintendent and say, "Okay," with along with the parents and what they raise and what they need, and you're going to talk about it again. But it doesn't mean it's another warrant article.
Right, right.
It's like the football team.
I agree with you, and that's, and that's what I'm using the football team as an example because once they set up that, I think it was originally twenty-five thousand, any added costs since, must have been ten, twelve years now, have been borne by the district.
These parents are showing us they're very committed to promoting an ice hockey program.
Right, right.
And we need to get behind them. The voters are very, you know, they, I mean, I'm not into just creating new sports for the sake of creating sports, but ice hockey is a big New England thing. And we have a better chance of having a good team in our high school with ice hockey than we do football. And I love, and I love football. Now, don't get me wrong. I'm already planning Sunday's menu, so I love football. But I think we're too small in school for that. Doesn't mean it's wrong or anything like that, but I want to see ice hockey in Sandborn.
Last question. This calls for a varsity team. Three, four years from now, you have enough kids. Are you also then going to come in for a junior varsity team?
Your athletic director is going to come in.
Okay, and that's fine. I guess what I'm trying to do is get it all out there so the people understand because we ran into this with football, and I hear a lot of complaints about football because it's out of twenty-five thousand dollars, it's X number of dollars. Well, you know what? The people voted for it. I see what the problem is.
That is correct. Like, I could say to them, "Cows are green." I think we're too small school to field a very good football team. Doesn't mean it's not important. Doesn't mean that the kids don't enjoy it and get a lot from it, but I think it's equally important to bring in an ice hockey team with this kind of support. That's what I'm saying. So if this passes, it becomes part of our budget. And how the AD and the building principal and the superintendent work out.
It's part of our budget next year.
That's correct.
Did we get a motion on this? I'm not sure if I asked for a motion.
We have, we have a motion. This was the discussion.
Okay, all right. Jim?
Um, I'll get you to. I've got some concerns here. We had, the athletic director came to the school board with a number of proposals for sport, to fund different sports, and we turned it down. The ice hockey people have been funding this since two thousand twelve. They're asking us to kick in ten thousand five hundred sixty-eight. When the football was proposed to the high school, who knows what they asked them to kick in, and now it costs multiple times that. The people didn't vote for multiple times that. They voted for whatever that warrant was. So we need to understand that this is not a fixed number. Whatever this number is, it's going to grow over time. I think ice hockey is a good sport, and I think kids need activities. But I don't know that we should give it preference over the other sports that the athletic director brought to us to be funded that we didn't.
Let me help you with that, though. I told her she couldn't bring hockey forward because it had been, because the board had asked me not to do that.
Also, it was voted down for two years.
Last year, the board made it clear to me not to bring ice hockey forward through the budget. That was the athletic director's first choice to add to the budget. I just want to be transparent.
But we didn't fund the other requests that she had.
You didn't, you didn't, but I'm just simply saying that the only reason why ice hockey wasn't brought forward as her most important request was because last year, when we brought it up in the budget process, we were told not to do that because it had been voted down at a warrant.
Correct, and that's, that's an important point because even though it's been by small, relatively small numbers, the fact that it's been defeated, we couldn't as a board then institute ice hockey.
No, it doesn't feel right, but I just want you to know.
It would have been illegal to do that.
Yeah, I just don't want.
Once it passes, we can.
The people had spoken.
My message is that the athletic director supports this fully, as do the administration. I just told them no. I just want to make sure that we were transparent about that.
My questions are more logistical. I would be curious to know the cost per, the cost per student, the cost per athlete, participating athlete. Do we have, do we know those numbers? Do we have those numbers? And as compared to our, say, football or soccer?
Right.
How much are, how much, how much does this represent for athletes in comparison?
Information, some extra information. What we're talking about here is, and not right now, but it would be helpful before the deliberative session. How many kids have participated in the program? What's your total budget? What's the cost per student? So that way, we can look at that program in comparison to other programs and have an idea of next year, or a year after it passes, what the impact would be on the budget.
Could I just make, well, I guess, can I speak real quickly?
Yeah, 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 I mean, you know, this is something you might want to have for the deliberative sessions, what she's saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so the money we're asking for, the ten thousand whatever, is, is basically, well, right now we have fourteen students in the program. We've had twenty in past years. Pretty much, it's gone down a little bit this year. I can't speak to the exact cost per student, but it's ten thousand divided by that number of students playing the sport. The reason we aren't asking for ice time is we realize that ice hockey, ice time is expensive, and that's what the board feels like. It's our responsibility, the Sandborn Boosters Board, it's our responsibility to pay for those expenses because those are far above and beyond what any other athletic sport we normally get. But I believe the numbers that are requested are similar in scope and size to what a varsity program, baseball, or a varsity program, I'm trying to think of a team sport, that basketball maybe, would be asking for to cover the transportation costs and the coaching stipend that's part of the collective bargaining agreement. So we, we as a public entity have to raise the money to pay the coaches because it's officially Sandborn sanctioned sport, NHIA recognized, all that kind of thing. So we're doing things that we have, we're raising money to cover costs that we didn't ask to have, but are being thrust upon us based on some of the agreements that the district has. So I believe the costs are in line with other team-like sports that have a coach, that have transportation costs, that have to pay dues and fees to their NHIA to be sanctioned, and also to the officials to referee the games and so forth. So it's all those types of, I would say, standard team sport costs that we're asking for. So it should be, but I can try to get those numbers from our athletic director because the school pays for it, then the boosters reimburses the school. They've, they've put the money out there, and we then fund them back the money that they expend. So all that historical information should be available.
So, John, so I see that there is a split of the money. So the boosters, it's the intent of the boosters to continue for the future to, I know you don't speak for them in perpetuity. I'm just, but your understanding of the intent is that the fourteen thousand five hundred that has, the boosters have been raising, that the intent is sort of for the booster to continue to raise that?
Yes, so we've been raising twenty-four thousand approximately per year for the last at least three or four years that we've been varsity. And the booster's intent is to continue to fund, raise funds to fund the ice time portion, which is why the wording in there specifically says for non-ice time expenses. So there's ten thousand, and any future budget increases would just be related to any non-ice time expense, you know, non-ice time expenses that increase. Not looking to put in new JV team because I don't think we can afford that ice time to fund, you know, if you add a JV team, you add the huge cost of ice time to put that JV team out there. So I think that would be difficult for us to do as a fundraising board.
Chairman, ask a question?
Yeah, I need to ask a question too, maybe the same one.
So, look, I just want to clarify that this, so in a way, the concern about the escalating costs of hockey are addressed in this warrant article because it's only for non-ice time items. Right, you, the school board administration would control how much, you know, going forward, I guess, from the regular team expenses that you are going to fund, but we're keeping the ice time out. If you don't have ice time, you don't have a hockey team. So the booster's board would be responsible for continuing to pay for that ice time. So in essence, the hockey team is asking for the same consideration as field hockey. That you get transportation to games, you get coaching stipends, you get game officials' fees, uniforms and athletic dues and fees, but because the cost of ice time is so significant for such a small group of students that the parents are willing to raise the funds to maintain that component. I just want to make sure that we know, because I didn't realize this until myself right now, that it was binding that we would not have to pay for ice time because frankly, the biggest concern that I have is that I'm walking around as the superintendent of school saying, "We do not have adequate support for students for reading, writing, and math, and to add another sport is a major concern." So I'm thinking about my credibility. Right? But on the other hand, we've got a group of kids engaged in this sport, and they're asking for some, some equal, equal representation from the district as other sports. Well, it is, you know, I mean, I really feel for you about this. I want you to hear that. I mean, I'd love to have a ski team. It's exceptionally expensive, right? That's why I haven't brought it forward. So I want you to know that I really have struggled with what to do about this, and I think that the hard part for us as a board, in a community, is the community's voted no twice. So it makes it really hard for us to say yes, but I hear what you're asking for is for the board to just endorse the warrant article and then let the community decide.
But they're voting no, they're voting no twice, Mr. Superintendent Rose, because it's not thoroughly brought forth like you just did. You had your aha moment.
Okay.
And that's very important to hear.
We don't know that that's, I mean, you can't state that categorically. We don't know why everyone voted no on this.
I think his point is well taken, but that's part of my problem. I wish we could change the wording of this warrant article because I got to tell you, at first I was for it, but now hearing that, I want some assurance, and it's not in here, that the people, the booster people, will pay for that ice time.
It says.
Because, no, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I'm under the impression that when, when you, when you, when you set up this, if this passes, and there's a line item, the school owns it, everything included. I don't think you can then separate and say the school is responsible for the ice time because how can you have a hockey team without ice time? So there'd be a heck of an argument there. But if it was something in here definitively saying that the boosters will continue in the future to pay for the ice time, boy, would, bang, you got it, in my opinion. But I'm concerned that this is going to be like football. I got to tell you, at the beginning, I was for it. Ellie had me sold. Football started, I think, twenty-five thousand. It's.
Over fifty.
Yeah, it's double that, you know, and it's going to continue to grow, and that's okay. I've got to tell you, personally, I love, I love pay-to-play personally, all right? But is there any way, I don't know of any way. I would love to see where you will continue to pay, more definitive, continue to pay for ice time. I'm going to read this again. Maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I'll switch back, okay?
Another way to approach it would be to pay, to. Another way to approach it would be to pay, to match what they raise up to a ceiling.
There's any number, I, I agree with you, but I, 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 I have a hot topic.
But I still have the issue of the creep in the cost, and the part that Superintendent Ambrose brought up about the issues with the academic side of the, the funding. And, and also, again, we turned down other sports.
Okay, Ellie, I'm gonna pick on you again, because your institutional knowledge is phenomenal. These funds will be used to cover non-ice time expenses. Do you interpret that to mean exactly what he said? We will continue to pay for ice time.
It's implied, it's clearly implied.
That is how I read it, was that if we will-
Beautiful, I, I, that's why I had to read it a second time.
That was our intent.
However, there's no guarantee that they're gonna raise that fourteen thousand five hundred.
Except that that's how the warrant article was passed by the people.
But if that happens, then the program wouldn't run. Because as a superintendent, I'm not gonna allocate funds to cover that. The agreement here, I'm comfortable with this language saying that it's non-ice time expenditures. Well, no, but, but Vicky could come to me and say, I'd move money from here to there to this and that to cover it, and I'd have to approve that, and I wouldn't-
And then, but she would know right up front, this is what the board is willing to go for.
Right, the part I, sold me on this was when it said non-ice time expenses. I beat, beat into what I was about to say.
So they're asking about a thousand dollars a student, they get an average of fourteen kids.
Not even that, but yeah.
But they, in fairness to Mr. LeBlanc, this, these parents have worked their butts off raising money for the last several years, and I think we need to show them some support. We cannot, if this article doesn't pass, we can't help them. But if it passes, it helps them move forward.
Yeah, this doesn't guarantee it passing, right?
No, but it will help-
That's right.
If they see support. And the other thing, you know, you're gonna wanna have some letters to the editor so that, and Facebook and all that social media stuff. It's, it's wicked important to ask for people's support, especially when you got so close.
And as of now, at that deliberative, I hope I don't forget, you can nudge me. I'm gonna make sure that the people understand that. Because that's, that's what, that's what's weighing my vote, I gotta tell you. Okay, any other discussion? Move the motion?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One, two.
Aye.
Opposed, one, two, three. Now.
No, wait a minute, wait.
I'm an aye.
Oh, you're an aye? Oh, I'm sorry, you're a little late, that's good, because otherwise it would have gone down to defeat with a tie.
I am conflicted.
It would have gone to Peter, just three to three.
Yeah.
It still goes on.
Oh, that's, that's right, that's right, I'm thinking of-
Take the vote, Peter, again, so we're clear.
Right.
We have ayes, are myself, Tammy, you, and Cory.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and Pam and Jim, no.
Yep, I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting confused with regular normal motions.
All right, that concludes our, so Chair Collier, that will be the presentation you'll see tomorrow night with any changes that we make tomorrow based on the votes tonight. You're welcome.
Cory, you're gonna be up in a second, let me explain to the people here. Cory has gone to numerous, as we know, statewide assemblies for school board associations. So based on his expertise and years of experience, I tapped him to go, I didn't know at the time it was a Saturday, when I found out, I called Cory, and he's still willing to go on a Saturday up to Concord to be our representative. So Cory, it's up to you.
Yes, so what we're talking about here is, on January twenty eighth, excuse me, January twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, at the New Hampshire School Board Association's offices located at Twenty-Five Triangle Park in Concord, New Hampshire, the annual delegate assembly will occur. I'm the only person in the last six years that I'm aware of that has gone to the New Hampshire School Board Association's delegate assembly. For those who are listening, the delegate assembly is a foundation of the New Hampshire School Board Association's governance structure. And it provides critical direction to the New Hampshire School Board Association. The delegate assembly represents members' interests before the state and national policymakers. This is an event to work with the New Hampshire School Board Association to advocate staff and legislative resolutions. No, this is a working event with the New Hampshire School Board's advocacy staff and Legislative Resolutions Committee. This event is designed to bring the delegates from our board and other boards throughout the state to Concord to go ahead and reflect the interests of our Board of Education to the rest of delegates. So what I want, I'm gonna share my screen with you here. Ultimately, there is some collateral and information, and there's some process that I've actually defined, and I'd like to, I'll introduce this to you now. I've created an online Google form, as you'll see here. This online Google form has explicit instructions for what, what we need to achieve. Can you see my screen okay? Just wanna make sure you can see it. Ultimately, what I'm gonna ask of all of us between now and January twenty-first is to take this survey, and I'll actually give you a sneak peek of the survey while we're here. Ultimately, the, step one is to result, review the New Hampshire School Board's proposed resolutions document as supplied by the New Hampshire School Board Association. You can also find this document online at the New Hampshire School Board Association's website, N H S B A dot com. Ultimately, I'm gonna ask, I, myself, and the rest of our board have to go, I'm gonna ask to all go through the subsequent survey indicating our individual votes for each of the eleven proposed resolutions. Once our vote is, our vote is required to be taken by no later than January twenty-first, so I can then present back the results January twenty-third. We will then discuss those on January twenty-third, and then I will move forth and bring those resolutions and our vote, our votes as a board onto twenty-sixth at that assembly. Any questions so far? Okay, so ultimately, what, I am gonna ask you, I'll send you this link to this survey, and in doing so, you'll be able to click on this document right here, which brings up all the resolutions that I'm talking about. And you'll see that the resolutions were proposed by other school districts and others. And ultimately, you'll see, like, here, proposed resolution one was presented by Oyster River. What's the resolution, and then what's the New Hampshire School Board's rationale for supporting or not supporting? So they'll actually have the rationale, they'll have the opposed or not recommended by the New Hampshire School Board Association. So this is pretty awesome, so each resolution, all eleven of them, you'll see the individual submissions, the resolution that they're asking that we vote on, and then what's the recommendation as per the New Hampshire School Board, Board of Directors. I will, again, once you go through the survey, so I'll actually go back to the, go back to the survey itself, bear with me. I have my screen. Sorry, Google Chrome's doing something. I can't get it out of this. Technical problems. Any questions so far? Just like you're asking, this is pretty straightforward. You're, we're just, I'm asking us to be involved. And we, why can't I get that? Okay, there we go. Sure. All right, so I, as a board member, I will come in here, I will initial, I will then go ahead and then vote if I support or oppose. And I'll take this information back to the rest of the board. For what's worth, oh, you don't see my screen, I apologize, this is up here on my screen.
There we go.
So you'll come in, initial the survey, and then you'll go ahead and provide your proposed resolution, do you support or not support it? We'll review this on the twenty-third, and then this information should be brought back to the twenty, on the end of twenty-sixth. Pretty straightforward stuff. There's topics and subject matters that I'm gonna ask you all to review and read, like myself, and do our homework, and go, and look at the rationale, and look at what N H S B A does. I'll, I'll state the following, that sometimes it's a two, three vote. You know, so, you know, ultimately, a lot of people go with the New Hampshire School Board Association's recommendations, but you know, that may not be who we are. Say, for example, do we want guns to really be able to be carried into the building or on the premises? There's a open gun law discussion. You know, that may not suit what success or bury at what our climate and culture needs to Samborn. So, long story short, we have to vote, I would ask us to vote on these as how it pertains to our district, not how it pertains to other districts throughout the state. That's all I have to say about this. I'm gonna shoot you a link, ask you to take, review the document, take survey, we'll talk about it on twenty-third.
Sure.
I will then report out at the following board meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. Does it, is there a cost to send a representative to this?
No, I don't believe there was.
No.
No cost? Okay. I would just ask, Cory, I know you attend a lot of these events to promote your software business. I'm just wondering, is this gonna be a multipurpose thing, or are you just there to, to be as a school board rep?
This is me being a professional representative, I don't need to do that. I understand the implications of doing that, just so you know.
You're gonna be representing the school district solely?
Yes, whenever you find me, I'm representing our school district, our school district only, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any questions for Cory now?
No, but I'd like the, the district to post the resolution on the homepage for the public to see. Because I wouldn't mind feedback from the community before we make our decisions. These resolutions support or oppose legislation, and they concern gun rights, they also concern use of tax dollars to reassign students to private schools or religious schools. And there are some pretty heated and strong opinions on these issues. So I'd rather not have seven people vote on this for one person to represent. I'd like to hear from the community. I might even go to the meeting just to watch, see what happens. I would have liked to have gone myself, but apparently not going.
Could we put a time date on that earlier than you wanted it from us on the twenty-first, I think? Because you may have added coalition to do that you didn't plan on. Does that make sense, Cory?
Well, am I hearing that you wanna put this survey online, Dr. Brown?
No, no, just the resolutions, they're already online.
I, I don't, no, the survey is-
The school board association is not simply educational, they're also a lobbying group, and they're asking us to support various resolutions that become legislation. So I think the community ought to know what-
I was gonna say, I understand, it depends on-
Let's, let's, we're getting off topic now.
Yes.
I can see putting on our website, these are the resolutions being proposed by the New Hampshire Delegates Association. If you want any input, contact your school board member, done.
There we go.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
We're not gonna all vote the same on these things anyways.
And then move, and, and we will not have the discussion on the twenty-third until after first public comment. So we'll have public comments come forth too.
That's a great idea, too.
All right, I, I'm sorry, I, I just noticed something in my minutes here, I didn't notice I was taking. Are we comfortable with the position of the warrant articles?
As is.
As is?
As is.
All right, so we don't have to bring it up next week? All right, anybody disagree?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of that one. Okay, yearbook, we have always given three hundred and fifty dollars, for those who wanna know. Tom, you're up on this.
Yeah, no, we, we have an ad in the yearbook every year. It's basically just says, congratulations, class of two thousand eighteen, best of luck from the school board.
The rates haven't gone up?
No, no. Yep, so we're just asking for you to approve that.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, second, you got that all right? Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Second public comment. Come on down, you're the next contestant, The Price is Right.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the board for supporting the voting in favor to support the Article Ten for the Samborn Ice Hockey to partially fund it, no ice time included. And I also wanted to make a comment on Article Nine, that it says that to raise in appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars. The other article says up to twenty-five. I'm thinking maybe you want up to seventy-five, in case you don't have the full amount, and you want the flexibility to fund part of the seventy-five. That's just a, something I noticed. But thank you again for supporting the hockey warrant article, appreciate it.
Um, just to let you know, we talked about that, I, I like your comment. First one was to establish it, this one, we already have it. So based on the amount of money, we'll put the seventy-five in first, and then anything else.
And, and the Department of Revenue funds them in the order that they're on the warrant? So they will take the, if the article says seventy-five, they'll take the first seventy-five. The board won't have the discretion to put less than what the article says, even if you say up to.
Okay.
Annie, I think I've touched my hand.
I had that same thought about the up to. I was just thinking about Articles Four and Five, and then Six and Seven, and remembering that no means no. The purpose of having Five distinct from Four, to have the reconsideration is that if Four fails, then you have a recourse. If you have them combined both into Four, then no means no, and you have no recourse. So you've kind of removed it. So it seems to me that, and I suspect your legal opinion will agree with that, that, you know, it's just common sense that you wanna have them separate. Thank you for all your debate and time that you've taken and consideration you've taken. I think we're all very eager to fund a lot of the stuff that is in the superintendent's entry plan and plan for what's going to happen in the future with more early intervention and more spending for the kids to improve the outcomes that we're getting in the district. And it's frustrating to have to wait another year or so while we look to be able to find the money that we've identified is possible to be found in the budget. So I'm really, really looking forward to the next year or two, when we can actually do some stuff instead of having such a lean budget. I wish that, you know, I'd like to see some of these, some of these athletic programs come forward once we've found and freed up some money, which is currently being tied up in facilities that maybe is not the most efficient use of the best thing for the kids. Thank you.
Other business, oop, sorry. See, I knew you'd say something, I signaled to you first, but you waited for the second.
I want Mary Seer from Kingston, and I wanna make a, an observation and ask a question, which I understand you are under no obligation to address. My observation regards the collective bargaining agreements and the warrants as they are presented. Article Four is a two-year professional staff agreement. Article Six is a three-year support staff agreement. It's my understanding that our administrators also formed a union this year. And I'm wondering, was there, or is there, a collective bargaining agreement for that group of folks? And if so, why isn't it on this warrant?
There is not, we cannot comment at this time.
You will not see a warrant article for the-
We can't discuss it, negotiations are confidential.
But you, but this is what you're gonna see on the warrant.
There's no settled contract, is what we're trying to ask.
This, this will be what's on the ballot.
But there is, there is a collective bargaining unit for the administrators.
Yes, yeah, they voted for that six months ago.
We, we really, I wanna be very careful. We, we have not come to an agreement with, with another group at this time.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry, I know, I'd love to say more, but I just can't. Thank you for asking.
That's my law, that's my, that's my-
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff going on.
Okay, other business? No, okay, agenda. Fellas, what I have is the walkie-talkie. Right, the fireside, and the, Cory and is New Hampshire.
Well, the fireside's on the thirteenth, not the next agenda. It's on the thirteenth of February, that's what we agreed on.
That's a separate meeting night?
Yes, the next meeting's the twenty-third.
Okay, that's fine.
Fireside will be in February.
In February after.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I have February thirteenth, you're right, I'm sorry, okay? My mistake on that one, fellas, that's why we checked.
And we'll have policies, lots and lots of policies for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. So, that's what I have so far, we'll come up with other stuff in due time. Announcements, it's not written down here, I don't think, oop, oh, boy. Yeah, it is, okay, let's start with the first one. The next Samborn Regional, okay, we have no other business written down except for the announcements, anybody disagree with that? Okay, we can start getting our coats on. The next Samborn-
It's a non-public.
Is there a non-public? Oh, there it is down there. Okay, the next Samborn Regional School Board Meeting will be held on Wednesday, January twenty-third, twenty nineteen, from six P M. to nine P M. In the library at the Samborn Regional High School. Didn't see the third page, we don't usually have one. The Budget Committee Public Hearing will be held on Tuesday, January, Thursday, this is tomorrow, folks, January tenth, twenty nineteen, at seven P M. It says here in the library, Annie.
Auditorium.
In, okay, in the, okay, in the auditorium at the Samborn Regional High School. Snow date, but I don't think we need one, will be Friday, January eleventh. Okay, here we go, anybody who wants to be on the school board? Sure, okay, the filing period position, for position for the- Sure, okay, the filing period position, for position for the Sanborn Regional School Board, the Sanborn Regional Budget Committee, and the district moderator will be open on Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, and end on Friday, February 1st, 2019, at 5:00 PM. The candidate's filing form may be obtained at the SAU office from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, starting now?
That's for the 23rd.
Okay, that's starting the 23rd. The school district clerk will be available on the last day to file, the last day to file, from 5:00 PM at the SAU office located on the second floor of the Sanborn Regional High School, 17 Danville Road, Kingston. And who is the school district clerk? That would be Phyllis, whose, whose desk is the second one when you walk in left-hand side with the candy. Okay. First deliberative session. Yeah, unless I get in there first. The first deliberative session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 6th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the Sanborn Regional High School. Snow date is February 7th, 2019. The second voting, that's the election, that's when you get down with the ballots. Okay, the second voting session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the Swayze Gym, Sanborn Seminary Campus for Kingston voters, and the Newton Town Hall for Newton voters. Ellie will be there. Okay, Ellie is our town moderator. Okay, anything I read that anybody wants to change? Okay, how about some motions to come out and go in and all that other stuff?
We'll be going to non-public session for RSA 91A, colon, 3, Part 2, Section C and D. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Ellie? Jim?
Yep.
Aye, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, Corey, he asked, me, he asked, that's unanimous by voice vote.